Next on the agenda is Resolution Number 329. Mr. Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Resolution 329 is actually a resolution that I've introduced in the last three legislatures. This is the fourth time I've introduced it. In it, I asked that this legislature join in asking the U.S. President, Obama, to send the Framework Convention for Tobacco Control to the U.S. Senate for its ratification. In the early 90s, the WHO, the World Health Organization, got together and they put together a Framework Convention for the Control of Tobacco. It's been adopted by 184 of the 192 countries in the United Nations. In the Pacific, there's only two areas that haven't -- don't have it in effect, and that's Indonesia and Guam and Northern Mariana because we're American territories. The three island nations that we know of, the FSM, the Palau, and Marshall Islands, have all approved the Framework Convention. The Framework Convention provides protections and allows for countries to do various things to try to make sure that tobacco was controlled. One of them is to allow for the countries to have things like in New Zealand where they have the packets of cigarettes with a cancerous mouth on the cover as opposed to Camel Joe. In some countries, it's actually just a plain white cover, no branding of any of the tobacco You go to the Philippines and you go to Thailand, which I've been to recently, when you walk in, it's not like going to the mom-and-pop stores here. There's no big display behind the cash register and big signs in front of the cash register. It's all kept in a sealed closet, and it's opened and closed whenever you need to buy cigarettes. It's an effort to try to take it out of the public eye and try not to encourage people to smoke. President Obama, when he was a freshman senator, sent George W. Bush, the then-president in 2005, a letter asking that President Bush send down the Framework Convention to the Senate for ratification in 2005. Now, Mr. Obama, who has assumed the presidency of the United States, is now in his eighth year and still has not sent that same Framework Convention that he was willing to ask for in 2005 to the Senate for its ratification. I'm hoping that my colleagues will support the passage of this resolution to remind Mr. Obama that he had asked about it in 2005, and it's now 2016. He still hasn't done anything to get the U.S. Senate to do this so that all of us can start doing things where we can control tobacco in our various jurisdictions without having to face some of the impediments and objections that some of the companies may have as to how tobacco was sold, how it's advertised, and what needs to be done as it relates to it. And it's imperative that we do this, ma'am. I mean, every year, we have 460,000 people die, die. That's more than was lost in the Western Pacific in World War II. Every year, it's more than cancer, HIV, car accidents, and all the drug deaths in this country. Just this one drug that, for some reason, the country has kept not on the schedule of controlled substances. And so it's imperative that we do something to try to assist in making sure that future generations aren't addicted, and this is one way to be able to get more expansive laws than we already be able to do by getting the protections of the Framework Convention. The United States initially agreed to it, but it never sent it to the Senate for ratification. And so all I'm asking is that we send this to the President, remind him that he has been -- he asked for this 11 years ago, and hopefully that he will send it to the Senate before the end of his term and that it'll be passed by the U.S. Senate before he leaves office. Thank you, ma'am. Chairman, Speaker.
On the motions, anyone who would like to speak? On the motion to send 329-33 to the third reading file, no objection -- I mean, Resolution 329 to the third reading file, without any objections. So, Order Resolution Number 391. Mr. Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I noted that before session started, you invited a number of us to a wave tomorrow evening in support of the flight attendants who are trying to get a contract and have not been able to finalize a contract for the last five years. This resolution addresses something else. There is currently protection against harassment or attacks on flight attendants. I think we all saw that recently with the passenger on that Korean Airlines where he attacked a flight attendant and a bunch of the passengers had to subdue him. He was eventually charged in the District Court of Guam for federal offense of harassing and impeding the operation of the airline. There is that protection currently in law. Unfortunately, there isn't a similar protection in law currently for the front line, those customer service agents who are at the -- that have to deal with upset passengers when a flight is delayed or even if a passenger is -- or if a passenger is upset about whatever. We've heard stories about people being pulled over the counter by irate customers, and we've heard of service agents that have been fired because they've tried to protect themselves against a customer, and of course, the customer's always right. And so if a customer service person tries to protect themselves against an irate customer who attacks them, they get fired, and there's no protection for them. So, the customer service agents have asked that Congressman John Garamendi of California introduce an amendment to the airline worker statute -- law, which would also make it a felony to attack a customer service agent. So all we're trying to do is get the U.S. Congress to pass Bill 4441, H.R. 4441, cited as the Aviation Innovation Reform and Reauthorization Act of 2016, to provide the same protections provided to flight attendants, to the customer service agents, who are the front line and the first person you see when you go to the airport. So I ask for colleagues to assist in the passage of this resolution also. Thank you.
On the motions, anyone who would like to speak? On Resolution 391. So, on the motion to send Resolution 391-33 to the third reading file, no objections. So, Order Bill Number 30-33. Mr. Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that Bill 30-33 be placed on third reading file, and I ask for an opportunity to speak.
Is that bill as substituted?
As substituted, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay. So the Bill 30 as substituted, and so you may proceed.
Thank you very much. Madam Speaker, this is a bill that I introduced in the 32nd Guam Legislature. It was passed barely, but it was unfortunately vetoed. I didn't expect an override in the 32nd because it passed eight-seven. But I thought maybe now might be the best time to reintroduce this. The intent of Bill 30-33 is to have all the autonomous agencies of the government of Guam have classified in-house counsel. We've all seen, over the last five years, the amount of money that in-house counsel have been able to garner from their representation of some of the autonomous agencies. At the Port Authority of Guam, they actually had to go to the Civil Service Commission to authorize the Port Authority to sign a contract with their legal counsel in the event that the legal counsel's fees went over $1 million. There is a -- for some reason, in the PUC, in order to be able to sign a contract of over $1 million, they had to get PUC approval. The PUC approved it. In the last five years, counsel for the port has made in excess of $600 to $900 and maybe over $1 million now annually, annually, in attorney's fees. At the airport, we just saw recently in the arbitration award that came down from the airport, that when the arbitrator announced their award, that in-house counsel -- I mean, not in-house, that the counsel for the port, airport, had run up almost $480,000 in attorney's fees. Fighting it, the opposing counsel ran up over $400,000. The arbitrators cost another $150,000. So just that one arbitration cost over a -- I mean, close to $1 million, just in attorney's At the port, we now have seen where, I believe at the hearing, one of the questions that was asked of the -- when we were -- not the hearing on the confirmation of one of the board members, there was a question raised by one of the good senators, asking whether or not the port looked at some of these cases to see whether or not they could cut their losses by settling some of the Civil Service Commission issues. As you know, there's about a dozen employees who were terminated, and their cases have been going up, and they have their outside counsel running up time, billable time, for civil service cases. We've had colleagues here who have actually represented people at the Civil Service Commission. It's not that specialized a practice. It can be done with good managers. It doesn't need a lawyer, but it's been attorney's fees that have been compiling. One case that was brought up by the senator that was asking prospective board member, the counsel for the employee had already amassed $42,000 in attorney's fees. Just imagine how much the port has been running up for each one of those Civil Service Commission cases. What this bill wants to do is to have the autonomous agencies have this run-of-the-mill stuff, civil service, the contracts, the taking minutes at the board meetings, sitting at the board meetings, done by in-house counsel, someone that's paid a flat hourly rate, I mean, not hourly, or on salary, but are classified at the agency. And in the event that they have some specialized need for attorneys, then they can petition the Attorney General to allow them to hire special counsel. For issues with aviation, with maritime law, they could ask the Attorney General to allow them to get special counsel to do that, for G.I.D.A. to have special counsel for bond counsel. The same thing even at G.I.D.A. They've run up almost $1.5 million in attorney's fees, in legal fees, just within the agency itself, with its local counsel. But at the same time, whenever they do a bond, they have the bond counsel who has made millions of dollars off Guam bonds over the last 30 years, but hasn't paid a penny in gross receipts here. But anyway, but they have a specialized practice in bonds, they're allowed to be able to hire that person to address that issue. And all that I'm asking in this bill is to, one, insist that all agencies of the government of Guam have in-house counsel, and if they need outside counsel, that they petition the Attorney General, and the Attorney General will determine whether or not it's a specialized area of law, and that the attorney that's being proposed to do it has five years of specialized experience in that area, as opposed to just someone being hired and not having any experience in maritime law or in federal aviation law or even environmental law. And the other thing that I've included in this in discussions with the Attorney General is to try to get the Attorney General to regain cognizance. Cognizance meaning authority over or to exercise authority over all of these counsel. I think all of you saw the news article the other day where the Attorney General expressed surprise and dismay that she was not apprised of what was happening in the YTK case, and all of a sudden, this is $14 million judgment. The local counsel hired by the port is designated as Special Attorney General and should have been clearing things through the Attorney General's office. In this -- in Bill 30, as I proposed it, and with the assistance of the Attorney General, we've written to provision in there where whenever you have counsel at the autonomous agencies, their filings need to be cleared by the Attorney General, or at least have her know what's going on so that either she can provide additional assistance with her staff in her solicitor's office or in litigation to assist in preparing the case, or if you need a different view on what the possible law is. I think some members of the legislature have seen some of the emails from when they were directors of agencies that had outside counsel, where they were making opinions, but it wasn't the Attorney General, and as a consequence, they're having to make some very substantial arbitration repayments, either at the airport or at the port. I remind everybody that the two largest agencies in this government, PUAG and GWA, both have in-house counsel. They're paid about $120,000. Those two agencies have managed brilliantly with in-house counsel. They didn't need to pay an attorney a half a million, three-quarters of a million, or $1 million to handle their cases. They're handled by one or two attorneys that they have on staff. In this bill, the Attorney General also wants to make sure that the Attorney General is kept apprised of what is happening and has a say in whether or not cases are appealed. I think the question that was posed by one of the colleagues at the confirmation hearing the other day was, you know, about cutting the losses. Should these cases be appealed, or should they not be appealed? And so the Attorney General should review it and try to figure out whether or not you're just wasting money or running up billable time by appealing cases for the sake of appealing, for the sake of increasing the billable hours, for the sake of increasing your income from the agency. The Attorney General or her staff would be able to assist in reviewing a case and say, you know, there really is no sense in dragging this out. Let's settle. Let's cut our losses, and let's move on so we don't end up with some of the exorbitant settlement or arbitration awards that we're now getting. At one of the hearings I asked the other day, has the port even calculated how much these cases are going to cost? Because some of these employees have been out of a job now for four or five years, and no one has calculated how much if they, after their third appeal up to the Supreme Court, and it's remanded back down and taken back up on another issue, how much this is going to finally cost when they have to repay the employee, all the back pay, all the attorney's fees that are going to be run up. It's going to be exorbitant, and the Attorney General would like to have the authority to have cognizance over all of these things that are happening. She is at -- the Attorney General, he or she, is, after all, the chief legal officer of the government of Guam, should have an idea of what is happening throughout the government of Guam, and if the government of Guam is going to be held liable for a $2 million arbitration award at the Airport Authority, or $14 or $15 million award at the Port Authority, or a malpractice suit of several million at the hospital, whatever it is, the Attorney General's office should at least have an understanding of what that implication is on the government of Guam, because it is going to be government funds that'll actually have to pay for it. And I think many of us were surprised last night when we were -- when a number of the colleagues were asking questions of the prospective board member to the port about, have you been discussing among the board, since this was a reconfirmation, have you been discussing with the rest of your board how you're going to pay this $14 million? And to the surprise of the three colleagues who were asking questions, it wasn't or hadn't been discussed with the board. And when one senator pushed the issue, well, how are you expecting to be able to do that, to pay that? You understand how much that's going to cost in increased shipping fees and the impact that it's going to have on the people. How are you going to address it? And he said, well, we guess we'll have to come back to the legislature. And the one colleague was shocked. You mean, you're going to ask us to give you the $15 or $18 million to pay this off? Thought you were an autonomous agency, that you were supposed to generate your own cash and to pay for things. And so we really have to get control back, and I think the only way to be able to do that is to have in-house counsel in all of the agencies throughout the government, and all of these counsel have to be under the direct supervision and cognizance and control of the Attorney General. So someone is watching what's going on everywhere in the government so that we don't get the possibility of being asked to underwrite from the general fund a $18 million settlement or a $2 million, or whatever the amount is that's going to be in any of these cases because some outside counsel has either wrongfully advised the board or inadvertently did not file on time or something, whatever. We've got to be able to get the Attorney General's office to have cognizance over that. So I ask that my colleagues support Bill 30-33 to be able to, one, give the Attorney General back control over everything that's happening in government as it relates to legal matters, and to try to save some money in the agencies and not have outside counsel running up costs. The reason why the Port Authority had to go to the PUC to get authorization to pay the attorney's fees if it went over $1 million was because that million just doesn't fall from heaven. That $1 million comes from fees that the port collects, that the port's going to have to pay out. And the only way that the port gets the fees is from tariffs. And all the tariffs that the port charges, eventually, we pay at the market. So I hope that I can get some support in this legislation, and I ask for an opportunity to speak again later. I see legal counsel hovering, and I may have a problem with something. So, thank you, Madam Speaker, and I hope that I have support for this legislation. I think it's the most opportune time, now that we see how it's not working out there, that we think that we're having the best legal counsel by paying their $1 million or $700,000 or whatever, and all we're getting are arbitration awards in the millions of dollars because of their failure to advise their clients appropriately. Thank you.
You're welcome. On the motion, Senator Torres, you're recognized.
I rise in full support of Bill Number 30-33. As senators, we really ought to have the goal to steward public funds and ensure that they are being spent in a way that supports the public interest. Recently, and the retiring speaker alluded to, there were a large number of monetary judgments that were entered against the government agencies in cases where those agencies were represented by private attorneys, not in-house counsel. And a lot of those judgments had me wondering whose interests are served when these private attorneys are retained by government agencies and they rack up large bills? Is it really our government's interests? The legal fees of government agencies that retain outside legal counsel are disproportionately high compared to those that employ in-house counsel, which suggests that there should be a more cost-effective option government-wide. I really believe that this government needs to integrate and standardize practices amongst the agencies going forward if we expect to improve general government operations. A policy, for example, to curb legal service contracts from becoming unnecessarily lucrative is prudent and sensible for the government. In looking at statistics with regard to litigation, I read that 95% of litigation is actually settled, of litigation matters are actually settled across the nation. And when we had a confirmation hearing the other day with one agency that has -- that had a large award handed down against it, I had asked about whether the agency was doing any risk assessments, litigation management, or mitigation assessments to help ascertain whether they should go forward or not. The answer was no. Which leads me to wonder Which leads me to wonder if what we're doing by having inside counsel is just perpetuating a culture of political payback and patronage? How could it be that legal counsel can steer the direction of an agency that the head of a board does not have, and the head of a financial department within an agency does not have control over the direction of its litigation and its legal course? There has to be accountability that the funds are properly spent, especially if management has no desire or incentive to question the billing practices of its private attorneys. I believe that public, the policy that's contemplated in this bill could effectively minimize the risk of attorneys taking advantage of government agencies for their economic gain. But I want to point out that beside the obvious cost savings and advantage, in-house counsel tends to develop a deep institutional memory and becomes an important part of an agency's corporate and risk management team. The bulk of agency legal representation deals with ordinary and routine matters. We don't necessarily need to have counsel that is billing out at $200 an hour and several of them handling routine personnel matters that could be handled by management, who should be experts in personnel matters to begin with. It would be a clear advantage to have in-house counsel actively guide management in decisions that could have potential legal ramifications to avert potential problems with contract management or negotiation and personnel matters. In-house counsel would not only be trusted legal advisors to management, but they may be called upon to assist with important business and policy decisions and strategic planning for our government agencies. In-house counsel could also help decide when highly specialized private legal counsel is necessary. What I worry about is this culture of political patronage and payback, where certain agencies employ people who you wonder are in the best interests of the agency, attorneys who have no expertise in contracts, in business, somehow get the awards to run these complicated agencies. And I believe that in what we've seen in the oversight hearings and even looking at the way that certain matters were handled with regard to, for example, YTK, without any reins, without any reins on these attorney, without anybody doing the risk assessments, the litigation management, or the mitigation assessments, there is no reason for these attorneys to continue to, there's no reason for them to hold back. Because, and I use this phrase tongue-in-cheek, but I really think there's something to it. When you have somebody who win or lose is going to get paid at the end of the day, what's it to him? Or her, or them? They're going to rake in the House money, you know that. Because they have nothing to lose and everything to gain. It is not in the best interests of the government. And I know that we have the precedent set with these large agencies as the sponsoring, the author of the bill, the sponsoring senator alluded to. We have a framework already where it is, it is working in those large agencies, but I think mostly what we have to do is just, it is so obvious to us where there are problems and we really need to go back to the principle of being good stewards of the public's money. And where you can contain, and where you can control, and where you can establish sound principles, sound moral, ethical principles with your legal counsel, you do that. You don't just put in people because whatever. You put them in, you don't rein them in, you don't, you let them decide your direction. You're going to end up with what we're seeing now. You're going to end up with cases that are not going favorable to the government, perhaps because of unsound advice, because of perhaps some other ulterior motives or special interests. But mostly you have money that could be spent elsewhere, going to places where it really does not benefit the agency to the fullest extent. I am fully in support of this bill. I have seen in agencies where routine matters can be handled with in-house counsel and where complicated specialized work needs to be engaged, it can be engaged through the AG's office or through some special arrangement, through the AG's office. But I don't think that we should ordinarily just engage high-paid counsel for the sake of having them in there. And I've seen in some cases, you have as many as three attorneys sitting in at a board meeting, charging $200 an hour, or perhaps a little bit less, to sit and sit and sit till it's over. How could that be a good way, a good use of the public's money? So I rise in full support. I think that many times we anticipate that this is just the way it's done, but it's time to change. We've talked about our financial situation being grave, we've talked about needing to do things differently. I think now this is a good first measure for doing things differently, specifically because we've seen how bad things can get if they go unchecked. And having in-house counsel that's salaried at a fixed price, having the AG being the responsible legal representative for the government, with the government's best interest, is in my estimate, a very good way to go at this point in time. Sisus Maasi.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Spalding, you recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I too rise in full support of this measure. I don't think it's necessary to reiterate what the two previous speakers have put forth before us, but I totally agree with their assessment and their thoughts. I guess just to add to, and perhaps elaborate upon something very simple, the Attorney General is, and it was mentioned by the author, the Attorney General is the chief legal officer for the government of Guam. And it only makes sense that through all this litigation, through all this, all the legal issues that are put forth that involve the government, there should be somebody who's definitely in charge of trying to find out where the balance is, what is in our best interest as a government, and so forth. So the Attorney General's office, the Attorney General herself or himself, needs to understand what is going on with all the various agencies. There has to be someplace where the buck stops on legal issues. And for us as a government, it should be with our chief legal officer, the Attorney General. With that, again, I commend the author of this bill for this, for this bill, and I commend the previous speaker for the insight that she shared with all of us. I am in full support of this bill, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, does anybody else who would like to speak? Mr. Vice Speaker, you want to close?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I want to call my colleagues' attention to the effective date provision on this. And I want to have everybody note that the effective date reads, nothing in this new, the new provision is to be construed to impair or interfere with existing contractual rights for legal services between outside counsel and the agency, which has obtained the approval of the Attorney General on the date of the enactment herein, provided that any provision for any extension of existing contract shall not be renewed except pursuant to this. What that means is, I'm not attempting to try to impair contracts that are currently in existence. If someone has a contract that's for three years, it'll run for the, up until the end of its third year. I may not like it, but we're going to have to recognize that. But at the, at the end of that, that term, when there is a renewal, I expect that the attorney, that the, that 3102 will apply and that the in-house counsel will be hired at that point with the oversight by the Attorney General's office. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the current contracts that are with some of the agencies will go until the effect, the end of their contract, but the renewal dates, any extensions or renewals will be, would be affected by this new law. But it won't be cut off today, or the day of, the date of enactment, it'll be when it has to be renewed, or a new RFP is sent out, okay? I just want everybody to understand that. I don't want them to think that we're going to be throwing people out, though I might want to, but I'm, we can't. I just realized, I know that I can't. And it's been brought to my attention that one of the concerns that many people have with, and keeping us all apprised, was to have transparency. And I didn't run an extra copy of this, but hopefully if I read it, people will understand it. I'm proposing to add a new E. The Attorney General shall promptly post copies of all administrative, civil, and appellate pleadings, letters, appeals, and settlement agreements on its website, accessible to the public, and shall promptly send copies to the Speaker of Ilheas Lutun in Guam and the Magalhain Guahan. It's just notice, that for many of us, we, we didn't know about the YTK settlement. We don't, we get copies thankfully from the civil service of all of their actions, and it's posted on our website. But what this provision wants to do is, everything else that's happening with the Attorney General's office, unless it's confidential memoranda, it shall be posted on the website so that everybody has an understanding of what's happening in government. I think, and I'm hoping that there'll be no objection to this, this attempt at making everything that's happening transparent to all of us so that we know where we can look for it, and it'll be readily accessible to all of us.
On the amendment, no objections? So ordered. On the motion to send Bill 30-33 to a third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. What, you kind of raised your hand.
Madam Speaker, I'm sorry. And if I may not withstand the rules, if I might be allowed to ask a question of the author on this particular bill, and I think it's relevant because we're talking about legal issues and legal representation, and we, as lawyers, we have certain...
So it's a question, but not necessarily about the amendment that passed, or it...
That's correct, Madam Speaker.
Okay, I'll allow that then.
Has nothing to do with the amendment.
Go ahead.
And the question, if the author would yield, it basically is that if an attorney is necessary for specialized service, a specialized attorney for specialized issues, the question is, Madam Speaker, who is the client? In other words, say for example, Gida needs a specialized attorney for some specialized area, and they look to him, look for an attorney, or the AG looks for attorney, I don't know how that's going to play out, who does that attorney really represent? Do they represent the Attorney General's office, or do they represent the agency?
Senator, do you, you do the question?
Or are they specialized, deputized Attorney Generals?
In the event that a, an agency goes to the Attorney General and says, I really need someone who understands maritime law, or FAA rules, then, and the Attorney General goes in, and they say, there's this attorney who has five years of experience in this specialized area, the attorney can be hired by the agency, by the agency, and the agency will have, they will be the client, the autonomous agency. The only thing is, is that the Attorney General will also, as that, as that special counsel is a special Attorney General, will also have to answer to the Attorney General in showing the Attorney General, this is the plan of action, and this is what we're planning on doing for the agency, but the agency is the one that is the client.
And fair enough, Madam Speaker, because there are issues within the profession in terms of trying to identify who the client really is and who they represent. So I just needed to ask that for my own edification.
So I think very simply, it's the agency with cognizance of the Attorney General's office.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion to send Bill 30-33 to a third reading file, no objections, so ordered. Senator Rodriguez on, can I remember now I'm going back, I was going back to check, and I think Senator Rodriguez, I have you for Resolution Number 308.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, move to place Resolution 308-33, the third reading, and be allowed to briefly discuss the resolution.
You may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Resolution 308 is relative to encouraging Imagallan Guahan to pursue the U.S. Department of Homeland Security's inclusion of Vietnam and the Philippines to the Consolidated Natural Resources Act of 2008, the Guam CNMI visa waiver program, and to express the people of Guam's support for such. I think the best way to explain this, Madam Speaker, it's not too long, if you give me some time to just read this, this resolution, whereas Ilheas Lutun recognizes that Imagallan Guahan, under Public Law 110-229, the Consolidated Natural Resource Act of 2008, has the authority to petition the U.S. Department of Homeland Security to expand the Guam CNMI visa waiver program to include the countries of Vietnam and the Philippines. Ilheas Lutun further recognizes that Vietnam and the Philippines were not initially included in the original approved countries due to various factors in the Department of Homeland Security's analysis at that time. In the approximately eight years since many changes have occurred within these two countries that warrant reconsideration, namely, the Philippines and Vietnam are regarded as fast rising economies in the global GDP rankings. Both countries show potential for future economic and business growth, which could be beneficial to Guam. The Philippines and Vietnam have seen over time significant decreases in the visa rejection rates, more so for Vietnam. Guam is a far western outpost for the United States, and this visa waiver program could strengthen the national bilateral relationship and enhance defense cooperation agreement as promulgated by President Obama. Congresswoman Madeleine Zepeda Leo has worked diligently in support of Guam's economy in addressing the Guam CNMI visa waiver issue for Vietnam and the Philippines. And so, during the Congresswoman's state of the, or I don't know what it's called, her report back to the people of Guam, she did mention this, this issue, and encouraged the governor to petition Homeland Security, as it really is in the authority of the governor to do so. Madam Speaker, the timing to do, to do such a thing is, there's no better time than now. We've seen the expanded relationship between the United States and Vietnam and the Philippines during the Obama administration, and as we know, the Obama administration has a few more months left in this term, and hopefully it's, as I think you share this position of mine, hopefully it is still, the White House remains with a friendly president that shares the views of Guam, and hopefully she becomes the President of the United States. Because we know that the policies that, or at least the relationships that the United States have with these two growing Asian tigers, Vietnam and the Philippines, would really expand and be beneficial to Guam, especially if we're able to secure this visa waiver for these two countries. Madam Speaker, just a little background, the projected growth forecast for the Philippines for this year was at 6.4%, and Vietnam was 6.6%. Both right behind the projected forecast for China, which is projected to be at 6.7% of their, of their annual growth. And so, the Philippines and Vietnam are among the countries with the strongest, with the strongest prospects. And we know a lot of our people who travel to the Philippines and see the development, the extensive development that happens there, you can be, you can be there this month, you go back three to six months, you see the, the development... the, um, the, the, the development and, and the progress that's happening there, and there's really a large, growing middle class in the Philippines that, uh, we know that if they're able to, um, visit Guam freely like we do with, um, Japan, we have, um, Taiwan, we have all these other countries, some of these countries, you know, Madam Speaker, that are part of the, um, the visa waiver for Guam CNMI, we see, you know, there's no benefit to Guam. We, we see no, no activity in their citizens visiting Guam. And, um, surely, we know that the Philippines, not just the, um, the, the development and the, the growing economy they have there, but thousands of our people here on Guam are, are Filipino-Americans, who have family members there, um, and would love to be able to, to visit. Those that are, are able to secure tourist visas now come to Guam. We see the, the increase in the statistics from GBB. Uh, what more, um, if we do have this type of visa waiver program? And, uh, you know, the, the details on how it's worked out, whether there is conditions in, in granting it, um, you know, I, um, I have every, um, faith and confidence that, uh, with the governor petitioning Homeland Security and then being able to work out, um, some sort of arrangement, that we can, we, we can really make this happen. And so, I'm asking our colleagues, Madam Speaker, to, um, please support this, um, initiative. Uh, we've had initial discussions with, um, the governor and his senior advisors on, on, um, pursuing this, and really with Congressman Bredalio's support of this, and her, uh, position that, um, this is the time to pursue a visa waiver for Guam and Vietnam. I think it'll be beneficial to our economy, as we want to bring in more revenue to our island, but it'll also be beneficial to, um, the families. We have a large Filipino-Gomranian family, also a Vietnam community here on Guam, and I think it'll be beneficial to our community if we are able to expand that, and, um, we'll someday soon be able to realize a visa waiver program. So again, thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and ask our colleagues for their support.
You're welcome. On the motion, does anyone like to speak on Resolution three oh eight? There being none, so on the motion to send Resolution three oh eight to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Senator Munia Barnes, is your bill, or does everybody have a copy of three twenty-three?
Everybody is.
I hope so. Everyone? Three twenty-three. Senator, you recognize?
She just, uh, Ma, uh, Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, before I talk on the merits of the bill, um, can I just do a motion-
Yes, you have.
-for, for legal counsel to renumber the bill's sections, beginning on page ten throughout the bill, or wherever necessary? Because when they did the-
Yes, okay, so that will be then, the technical, yes, as part of it, yes.
So, please, on the motion.
So, no objection to that motion, then, a technical correction by legal counsel and the enumeration of, uh, the different sections of Bill three two three. So ordered.
Sorry, Madam Speaker, I would like to thank the good Senator from, uh, Manila for suggesting that we address the bed and breakfast, uh, subject matter in, in this one bill. Uh, we need to begin addressing how alternative, uh, accommodations such as bed and breakfast and shorts, short-term vacation rental units will fit in our tourism industry as well as in our law. During the twenty sixteen PATA Annual Summit, Madam Speaker, the concept of a highly desirable tourist-type, uh, term, the experiential travelers, was explained. Um, I want to share with our colleagues that these travelers, uh, desire a unique and authentic cultural experience when they travel and visit, uh, a destination. They want to travel like a, a local, and you were there and heard some of this discussions. I know a lot of my colleagues in this room were, were, was, they were there, they were present at the PATA Annual Summit, and it was the first time ever that the Pacific Asia Travel Association had come to this part of the Pacific since its founding in nineteen fifty-one, and I just want to thank you and my colleagues who took the time to come to this international summit. Madam Speaker, um, when I talk about these experiential travelers and, uh, shared with you how they like to travel like a local, they purchase local, they engage with the locals, they, and participate in community events, they stimulate the, um, local economy at a very intimate level, they usually stay in B and Bs and short-term vacation rental units that are advertised through online accommodation broker sites like Airbnb, Flipkey, and Verbal. And, and Madam Speaker, we are glad to welcome these types of visitors, however, um, they still need to pay the required, uh, hotel occupancy taxes, and with the help of the community, this bill will address these alternative accommodation types. The community recommended that bed and breakfast and short-term vacation rental units be delineated and regulated differently. The two types of accommodations function differently from one another, Madam Speaker. One is geared, uh, toward providing a unique experience, staying in homes of a local family, and the other provides a room for tourists to live in without the amenities that come with a true bed and breakfast. More listings on Airbnb, Verbo, V R B O, and Flipkey function as short-term vacation rental units and not a true B and B. This amended bill consolidates bed and breakfast subject matter and addresses the industry all at once. So, in order to facilitate, facilitate a B and B vacation units, um, we will address the tax issue first. The Department of Revenue and Taxation is authorized to enter into agreements with sites such as Airbnb, Flipkey, and Verbal to collect taxes from visitors during the booking process and remit it to the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Many states, Madam Speaker, has, have implemented this. Uh, I brought up states earlier like, um, Florida, Portland, Hawaii, Chicago, San Francisco, San Diego, Washington, Philadelphia, and Phoenix. Um, Madam Speaker, um, the second part of the tax segment, sat, tax segment will amend Section three zero one oh one of the hotel occupancy tax to be read. The rate for a registered bed and breakfast shall be four percent of the rental charged or paid per occupancy per day. Madam Speaker, I want to say that we were very glad to receive testimon, testimony from the few bed and breakfasts that are currently operating today, and a couple of those operators have been, have been here for over, uh, a decade or two. They explained that the industry operates on a different, uh, business model, um, and that business, uh, that industry operates on that different business model, other, any than any other, um, accommodation type. They say they don't have a, a, uh, marketing department, uh, they don't typically work with, um, operators, tour operators, they don't operate like a hotel, uh, they only operate when visitors come in, and a lot of that was just through word of mouth. And they are very thankful whenever, uh, they get to work closely with someone who truly wants to experience the island hospitality, the warmth of who we are as island people, and just the warmth of Guam. Uh, these, um, bed and breakfast, uh, operators stress to us at the public hearing that a bed and breakfast concept to them is like a hobby, and that it's a labor of love, and that they just truly want the visitor, uh, to experience the Guam's unique cultural, uh, perspective from a, uh, in a family setting. And, um, they did, uh, wa, they did say they wanted to do their part to contribute to our tourism industry by cur, by creating a memorable experience for those who want to stay in their home. Madam Speaker, these, these folks who, who've already had that bed and breakfast concept, uh, we know that there's one in the south, we know that there's one in Ordet, Chalapago, we know that there's a, one or two places up in the northern area, and, and they said to us at the meeting that they weren't motivated by, um, in profit-making, so much that they were motivated by providing a unique, uh, local experience in this niche market. The bed and breakfast, uh, operations exemplifies the hospitality of our island and is known for what we want to promote. These, uh, operations can deliver that value-adding, authentic local experience that we strive to promote in our tour, tourism industry. As mentioned, Madam Speaker, um, they attract a visitor known as what PATA shared with us, and that's the experiential visitor. These tourists are high-value tourists who contribute to the local economy by spending their money at local shops and restaurants. More importantly, these travelers typically are repeat visitors whom also spread the word about their travels to friends and family, and we truly need to grow this industry on our island. When the good Vice Speaker and I did a resolution, uh, not too long ago, uh, to the family in Ordet, I want to share with you that there was a visitor, uh, from Japan, and she shared with us that she has come back more than eleven times. It's because she truly loved the place, she truly believed in her heart that it was a way to get away from the hustle and bustle, it was R and R for her, and if there's one thing that, uh, this family in Ordet has shared with her, it was the true spirit of hospitality, the true spirit of the Tramoral culture, and the true spirit of, of wanting to make sure that the cultural experiences and the learning of our history and our culture came from that family setting. Madam Speaker, um, be, bed and breakfasts are low impact, they operate in existing family homes on a residential scale, they don't take up a lot, uh, up a large tract of land, and they don't consume a lot of Guam's limited resources. Um, bed and breakfasts are great contributors to the island's economy because they operate on Guam. All their revenues and profits they receive from their operation stays on our island, uh, it doesn't go off-island and into the pockets of multinational conglomerates. And I say that, Madam Speakers, because when they buy their cleaning products and their supplies, they buy it from local shops and typically at retail prices. They usually are not a part of the package that deals, part of the, uh, package that deals with tours, and they encourage their guests to consume at local shops and restaurants. However, you and I know that they still have to compete with the hotels and accommodations of the same type, and so they, so they have to price the rooms at comparable yet competitive prices. Madam Speaker, um, when I say this, bed and breakfast is truly at home ownership. Um, when I also talk about the bed and breakfast concept, Madam Speaker, I talk about their low profit margin. It is not a very lucrative vis, business venture. Owner-operators do, do it because they enjoy hosting visitors, and there aren't many bed and breakfasts operating today. During, uh, one of the roundtables, a pa, a panelist noticed that the search for shared rooms or private rooms would yield a very small amount of listings on Airbnb. That's, I'm saying, true. The business isn't in bed and breakfast, the business is in renting rooms and apartments for short-term vacation stays. Furthermore, a lot of owner-operators who have come down to the public hearings and roundtables are older, they are, they are, are seniors and they are retired. Many have owned their homes for decades and just want to share their culture, their, share our culture and hospitality with the visitors who come and visit our island. This industry is well-suited for our Manumco, our seniors, who want to share our culture and hospitality while subsidizing their living expenses. A lower tax rate will allow these bed and breakfasts to market a, at competitive prices, which will encourage the industry to grow. Because of the unique challenges the bed and breakfast faces when operating, as well as the value-adding service gaps, they fill in our tourism industry, and we are reducing the hotel occupancy tax for the bed and breakfast only. Madam Speaker, I wanted to talk about that portion, because when we had the last couple of hearings, we had several members from our Manumco community. One was a retired teacher, one, uh, was in the business for a long time, and there was another one who shared that she had been doing it for a long time, and she really didn't make any money, and all she ever did was wanted to support local, and truly said, "As a Tramoral, wanting to promote tourism, this is my best way of doing it." And, you know, um, I've paid this all my life, but when the bill, law changed, I had to change it, well, I had to change from four percent up to what the hotel occupancy charge is now, but she said, "If there could be consideration, then we'd look into it." Please look into it. Additionally, Madam Speaker, we want to set up standards for B and B, uh, bed and breakfast to operate and introduce the short-term, uh, short-term vacation rental units into Guam's rental law. To summarize this portion of the bill, uh, the operator must live in the B and B. We clarify the definition by stating that the owner-operator shall occupy a room for sleeping purposes while the guest is on-site for sleeping purposes. A bed and breakfast shall have a business license and a mayor's verification. There shall be only one B and B on one single family dwelling per lot. The owner-operator shall be a resident of Guam for at least a year and reside on a lot being used as a, as a bed and breakfast. The bed and breakfast must be owned by the owner proprietor, it cannot be owned by a corporation or governed by a board of directors or shareholders. No more than four people can stay in one room as long as there's enough space in a room so that each person has a bed to sleep on. We don't want forty guests cramped into one room. Likewise, we don't want four people cramped into rooms the size of closets with no beds. The bed configurations are necessary to emphasize space and the fact that each guest has to have a bed. House policies must be posted online and be able to be accessed online prior to a booking and shall be identical to house policies posted on-site. This ensures that the guest knows what to expect when they get to the bed and breakfast. Bed and breakfasts must pay, I mean, bed and breakfasts, uh, must pay their fair share of the tax. Bed and breakfasts are exempted from the hotel sanitation and are not food, and are not food service businesses. The subarticle is not applicable to student exchange programs as long as the whole school is accredited by a U.S.-recognized accrediting commission. That's bed and breakfast. A short-term vacation rental is a residential dwelling unit that is provided to a transit guest in exchange for compensation for any term length, not to exceed a month-to-month term length. A person must obtain a business tax certificate from the Department of Revenue and Taxation and must comply with the regulations of the subarticle. A short-term vacation rental unit certificate is recor, is required to rent out your property. And, Madam Speaker, this, this certificate is not transferable. The owner may designate a emergency contact that must be reasonably available to handle any problems, and appear on the premises of the unit with two hours following notification of emergency personnel. The subarticle doesn't apply to student exchange programs. Short-term vacation units must collect as retired, as required, the required hotel occupancy tax, excuse me. Units are exempt from, uh, the hotel sanitation, hotels, the units are exempt from the hotel- Units are exempt from the hotel sanitation, hotels, the units are exempt from the hotel sanitation inspections. Bed and breakfasts and short-term vacation units may be permitted conditional use on a rural zoning. Short-term vacation units may be permitted conditional use on R1 and R2 zoning. Again, Madam Speaker, that was brought up at the roundtable discussion at length on how and what could it be expected in the neighborhood. So basically, Madam Speaker, if you own a home and live in it and provide bread and breakfast, and provide breakfast, you are a bed and breakfast. If you own a home and rent it or choose to rent it out to transit visitors, you are a short-term vacation unit. And I want to share with you, the simplest form to remember this is the main difference is ownership. Bed and breakfast is home ownership. Furthermore, Madam Speaker, we want to make it clear that our manumpu, whom want to participate in the bed and breakfast industry, should not have their property tax benefits taken away from them. Madam Speaker, again, that was brought up at the roundtable discussions, and they had asked for fair consideration at that. Their manumpus, a couple of them are in their 70s, and they're still doing this, and they said they had that taken away because they wanted to have this bed and breakfast. This type of venture is best suited for them, who wish to subsidize their income. They don't have to work around the clock, and there isn't a lot of startup costs needed. It is an ordinary business. They only provide their service when someone contacts them to rent out their room. They view their bed and breakfast as a hobby. They enjoy sharing our culture with people around the world. I hope that we want to keep that in mind. Our manumpus aren't as skilled in promoting and marketing their B and B through online intermar, other, I guess, online internet and that. And the business has a low-profit margin. There's some unique challenges for them to get around. So, again, they did ask for this. Lastly, as we engage, as we engage the public to discuss our bed and breakfast industry, one of the concerns brought up was how do we protect our community, visitors, and investment in our tourism industry when there are businesses who operate under the radar and may be inflicting harm to our community and visitors unknowingly? So simply, Madam Speaker, if you rent out a residential home to transit visitors and you don't get the proper license, you will be penalized. The process of getting a license to rent out your home to visitors requires clearances from various government agencies to ensure that that place is being rented, that it's clean, that it's safe, and it is comfortable. We don't want to jeopardize the health, safety, and the well-being of our visitors when they decide to stay in a home on Guam that unknowingly harbors poor and unsafe living conditions. This jeopardizes our branding initiatives and investment in marketing our island when visitors are unsatisfied with their stay and choose not to come back. The bottom line is that the visitor satisfaction impacts our economy, and it is necessary that we safeguard this. So, in detail, the owner leasing the use of their property as a lodging facility will be punished, if they don't have the proper licenses, will be punished upon the determination by the Director of Revenue and Taxation by a fine of $5,000 if it's a first-time offense, and there will be a notice to cease operations. The second offense, Madam Speaker, is punishable upon the determination of Department of Revenue and Taxation by a fine of $10,000 for every day that they are found to have remained in operation. The owner shall not apply for any license to conduct business on Guam for a term of one year if they are found to be operating without the proper license. If the property is being managed by an operator other than the owner and is operating without the proper licenses, the operator will be punished upon determination by a fine of $5,000 and a notice to cease operation. The owner of the property will be given a notice of illegal operation and their property within 24 hours of the operator receiving the notice to cease operations. The second offense, Madam Speaker, is punishable upon termination, again, for a fine of $10,000 for every day the operator has not been found to have remained in operation, has been found to have remained in operation. Additionally, the operator will not be allowed to apply for any license to conduct business on Guam for a term of one year, and the owner will be given a second notice of illegal operation and will be fined upon determination a $5,000 fine every day the operator has been found to remain in operation. During the roundtables, Madam Speaker, there was debate over whether the fines were too strict or not strict enough, and some of the smaller businesses had talked about saying that this may be too high. But, Madam Speaker, when this first came to play and we were looking at the safety, the cleanliness, the overall view of our island and our visitors, and we found out that there were a lot of illegal operators, it was talked in the roundtable discussions that we needed to set precedents, and we needed to state the fact that we welcome bed and breakfast. We welcome vacation short-term stays, but we want to make sure that everybody is above board and everybody follows the law on how to get a license. So, the majority of the presenters during the roundtable, the residents that came to these public hearings, had shared with us that regardless, the purpose of this bill is to discourage renting out residential homes to tourists without the proper licenses. It was to protect our community and neighborhoods that they live in. It was to protect our visitors from staying in poor living conditions, and it was to protect our investment in our tourism industry. And, Madam Speaker, I know that you were at least one of the public hearings there, and the majority of the people agreed that these were the points that we wanted to make sure that was safeguarded, and that if you were illegally operating and you were fly-by-night, that, yeah, if you don't get the proper licenses, go through the proper clearances, then you will be punished. And Rev and Tax said they didn't have that arm. So this will clarify that and give them the opportunity to literally penalize those violators who just take for granted that they could do things underneath the radar, underneath the table, underground, black market, or what have you. And we wanted to make sure that when we do this bed and breakfast industry, we do this short-term vacation stay, that it's done, it's done right, and that everybody is safe and that everybody will enjoy and visit our island and truly experience the warmth and who we are as island people, and the beauty that we have to offer, not just our people, but our community, our beaches, our parks, our stores, just everything, everything good about Guam. So, Madam Speaker, it was three bills. It was amended, we put amendments in. It's now Bill 3. When we first started this, when we first started this presentation, we wanted to make sure that we looked at everything, everything that has to deal with bed and breakfast, short-term vacation stay, penalization for those who don't follow directions, the safety of our visitors, the inspections. And I hope I mentioned everything. I know it was 12 pages long, but I wanted to make sure that I hit on every point that was talked about when the hearings and the roundtables were coming to play. So I really do hope that our colleagues support this whole bed and breakfast industry and short-term vacation stay, and that we will receive new resources for our people, but more importantly, that those manumpu who truly have the opportunity to benefit in working this, that they be given that opportunity to work so and pay what they used to pay. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Spalding.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I want to, first of all, thank and congratulate the author of this legislation for all the work that she and the committee have put into this, because it has been a contentious issue with, within the tourism industry, the hoteliers, and so forth. But again, a lot of work has been put into this. I just do have a question, and that really relates to Page 2 and Page 3, where we talk about the tax collection agreements authorized. The question really is, I mean, under Section A on Line 20, if I may just read it, "A transient accommodations broker means any person or entity that, like I said, including but not limited to persons, operate online websites, online travel agencies, or online booking agencies that offers lists, advertises, or accepts reservations, or collects whole, partial payment, etc." And identifies that, and then it gives the Director, Department of Rev and Tax, the allowance to permit a transient accommodations broker to register as a tax collection agent on behalf of all operators. And now, you know, I could read it, but basically the question is, I would imagine we're talking about websites such as Airbnb, which is a very popular website that advertises accommodations around the world. And even if we have this law in place, if Airbnb or companies much like them are operating in a different jurisdiction, the question is, how do you enforce the ability for them to pay the taxes over here?
Senator, do you hear to the question?
Madam Speaker, based on the successes that they have in the other jurisdictions, they would work an MOU with the Department of Revenue and Taxation, and based on their successes of what they're doing today, they commit to paying over that portion that is due to that jurisdiction. So, in more than, more than 10 or 20 of them in the different states and counties, even as close as Hawaii, that has a very successful program that we have modeled after, when the MOU was signed between Rev and Tax and Airbnb, FlipKey, Verbal, and a couple of others, they have that agreement worked in, that formula worked in, that they give back to that government, and there is a tracking. There is a reporting process, and there is a tracking process when those agreements are, when those customers buy from them. Now, so you go, like, you go on the internet, and you go on Airbnb, and you want to find a place, and they find a place here in Guam because they're coming to Guam. If they have an MOU with the government of Guam, the taxes to the 11%, the hotel occupancy tax that is due on that rental will be transmitted. There is a portion that's set there, and it will go to Rev and Tax, because they will sign that portion, that percentage that is due to the government.
And I understand that answer, but then, part of that answer is that if they have an agreement, I guess my question is...
This would authorize them.
Well, what if we're talking about, say, for example, in this case, one of the issues was the Korean market doing certain things. If there is an online operator out of Korea and there is no agreement with Gov Guam, how do we track that?
Senator?
Madam Speaker, that's why there's penalizations for all those who try and operate without having the proper licenses and not working that. And when this industry started to blossom, we did find out that it was companies like Airbnb, Airbnb, FlipKey, Verbal, that said, "If you work with us and give us the authorization to work with your government or your jurisdiction, the formula will be put in place." Now, again, for those who are doing it here on Guam, and there's a violation, you know, it's Rev and Taxes, they already have procedures in place when one who accepts visitors or accepts businesses without a license.
I understand.
So just, this just gives them that authorization.
Yeah, and I appreciate the answers. I don't object to it being in place, but I think what is perhaps not, and, you know, the companies that the good author has mentioned are definitely very reputable companies that a lot of people subscribe to just to check when they're traveling. But with this uprising now, like I said, there may be some companies out there who start up just because of this industry now being embedded, and I'm not sure how we track them, right, to understand, because I guess the question in my mind is, if I had, say, for example, a facility, a lodging place in which I wanted to rent out, and a friend of mine has a little company, say, for example, in Korea or the Philippines, and says, "Hey, I'll advertise it for you," and they advertise it, they send somebody over, I, you know, I do it, and I'm not sure how this all works. Does that customer from the Philippines or Korea pay that online, that online broker? Or does he, or does a customer pay me when he comes to Guam? I guess that's one question.
So, Senator?
Madam Speaker, on Page 12, maybe this will help. Section 6114, 61114, "No person shall rent, lease, or otherwise exchange for compensation or any portion of a dwelling unit as a short-term vacation rental as defined in the subarticle without first obtaining a business tax certificate from the Department of Revenue and Taxation and complying with the regulations contained in this section. No certificate issued under this subarticle may be transferred or signed or used by any person other than the one to whom it is issued or at any location other than the one which is, which it is issued."
And I appreciate that, but again, it's not so much if it was me, right, who was accepting rental, and I'm not sure how websites like Airbnb or any similar type of website, how they get paid. Do you know, does anybody know how that all works out?
Well, what happens is, again, when they go online and they want, they find a place, take, for example, Guam, because it's set, what they'll do is they'll pay by credit card, whatever the specified amount is, and portions of that amount, based on the agreement, based on the jurisdiction, and what you have to pay, and it's all-inclusive. They take the portions out, and then, when the tracking is done, and whatever date is made for the compensation to be remitted back to the government, whatever's agreed upon, then those things get received by the department.
Right, and I understand, probably for the bulk and for the reputable firms, the online firms that do this, I think that we can feel safe that that's how they operate. But again, we have seen companies come in, fly-by-night, or just startups, who don't conform to these laws, and perhaps who may have their office in a foreign country, will never step foot here, and will never even register here as an online company, and yet they're transacting business, they're transacting business on behalf of a homeowner, a bed and breakfast owner, or a lodging owner out here. And so, again, I guess my concern is really, that might be one of those holes within the industry, within this small industry, where we might not be able to collect some taxes. And I just want to bring that to the forefront, unless that area is actually covered, because as we see foreign countries, we come in, bring in more visitors to our island, there is the potential for those online purveyors of these type of establishments to go ahead and get that credit card, charge them, they get their fee, then pass on, I guess, whatever they owe to the homeowner here on Guam, and that's that. And whether or not we ever collect that 4% from that online company is a different issue than collecting from the owner of the bed and breakfast here. And I guess that's, you know, again, so that there might be a discrepancy in terms of the owner, myself, who owns the house here, saying, "Well, I thought that guy was supposed to pay it." And I don't know the answer for that. But I just wanted to bring that, because as good as this bill is, I think that as this moves along, as the industry develops, we might try to find other ways in which we can fill some of those gaps. But I am in full support of this legislation, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
You're welcome. On the motion, Senator Rispie Show, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I would also be remiss if I didn't rise to recognize the good work of our Oversight Chair over tourism and the countless roundtable hearings that she's had to kind of put all these pieces of the puzzle together to make sure that we close any... that we close, uh, any gaps or loopholes. And, you know, I was, um, quite impressed with how she conducted the roundtable hearings, because at first you are well aware that this issue came to light when a hotelier stood up and complained that the vacation rentals and the B and B folks may be operating illegally or underground, because they're not paying their fair share of taxes. And so, what, uh, her Oversight Chair over Tourism did is she issued, uh, invitation to anyone and anyone that's interested, that would share their experiences and their concerns, and, and more importantly, with the goal of leveling the playing field, so that everybody who participates in this kind of industry pays their, their taxes. And I, you know, in following what the previous speaker was asking, you know, that issue came up quite extensively in these roundtable hearings. For example, these hotels sell blocks of rooms to tour agents, and if their price is a hundred dollars a night, the tour agent will turn around and as a basis of that room will charge one hundred and ten dollars a night to cover the eleven percent hotel occupancy tax. And so when these rooms are, are sold by tour agents, they pay the hotel, and the hotel remits that to Revenue Tax. And so, what this does, it goes a little step further for those reservations that are being made through, online through Airbnb or other online mediums, this will allow the Department of Revenue and Taxation to enter in agreements with these online brokers, so that those hotel occupancy taxes will be remitted accordingly. But I think where this bill, uh, is very successful in bridging the gap, Madam Speaker and colleagues, is that, as Senator Barnes pointed out on page twelve, line two, where it talks about the short-term vacation rental unit certification, that, that business must get that certificate from the Revenue and Taxation, and must have that certificate in good standing, so that if ever, uh, Revenue Tax went to audit that business, and they got a tip that they're operating a vacation rental, or a, or a B and B, and that individual does not have a short-term vacation rental, or bed and breakfast, um, unit, uh, certificate, then that's why this bill also imposes, uh, very strict penalties. And I think this is why, um, she's expressed to us that this bill, uh, should really be addressed as one bill, uh, as opposed to several bills, because if one component of this measure is not, is not realized into law, then it kind of, uh, really takes away and negates, uh, the effort of trying to, uh, level the playing field, and, and make people pay what they're really supposed to be paying. And so, so I believe that that's, that's, that's the catch-all, that the catch-all is that you must be in good standing, just like a business license for businesses, and if they don't comply with the provisions of this, um, short-term vacation rental, or the B and B, uh, rental requirements, then, uh, they'll be fined accordingly. I also want to, um, express my appreciation to the sponsor of this bill, to, for not only having me a co-sponsor, but to recognize that for the B and B component, Madam Speaker, that the taxes for that, uh, is four percent and not eleven percent. And we all know that the B and B operators are really, literally in a cottage-type industry, uh, where they're just, uh, offering up a room within their house, uh, to have off-island individuals come and participate in the half-a-day, uh, experience, and the hospitality, uh, experience that many individuals experience when they come to Guam. And so that's why that four percent is there, because of the business privilege tax requirement and the cost of doing business. Now, if they were doing a short-term vacation rental where an individual will just offer up, um, an apartment or a condo if their homeowners association agrees to allow them to do that, it, they really are not going to get the whole, the visitor experience, the hospitality experience, just by staying in that room. Certainly, they're going to venture out and participate in the, in the local, uh, community, and in the local economy. And so I, I'm really, um, happy that Senator Barnes, um, took the concerns raised by those individuals, and at first, they really didn't want to provide for vacation rentals. They were adamant, when I say "they," it was certain hotelers that were adamant that they should not have vacation-type rentals here on the island, and it was the Vice Speaker who reminded, uh, everybody at every single roundtable hearing, Madam Speaker, that the, the type of traveler today, this is what they want. They mostly don't want to be in a hotel, or they mostly don't want to be along Tumon Bay, for example, and that they would much rather be happy just to be in, uh, in any, uh, available room, because they go scuba diving, or they do, uh, other things. And so, this is why the Vice Speaker made it very clear, and he shared his own experiences when going to the mainland, or going to many places. My family and I recently went to Seattle, and my in-laws, they rented, um, they rented a whole house, and there was about twelve of us. So instead of putting twelve people in a hotel, we rented out an entire, uh, house, and so we were able to have all the amenities of that house, from the cooking utensils, to the, the seasonings, whatever they had, the black pepper, the salt, uh, whatever they had, and it was just some kind of, uh, wonderful experience that, um, we were able to do that, and that's really the trend, uh, throughout the nation. And I, again, thank Senator Barnes for doing this, um, and this is another instance where we find that as senators, as legislators, we have to amend and update our code to reflect what's really happening, not only in our community, but throughout the world, and this, this legislation is reflective of that, and how this legislature is recognizing that this is an industry that has to be supported, uh, has to be allowed to grow, but more importantly, as this industry grows, Madam Speaker and colleagues, that they're also going to pay their fair share in taxes, and so that those who are already having to be burdened with the eleven percent hotel occupancy tax, uh, these same individuals will have to do the same. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion, Senator Blatch, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I too rise, uh, in support of this legislation, and also rise to congratulate and commend the author. Um, I do know, and I have been, attended, you know, a couple of the roundtable discussions, and knowing, you know, how sometimes it can be, it was, it was contentious, but she had the wherewithal and the will, and, and also the leadership to be able to bring the conversation back to where it needed to be, to have, then, a discussion on how to be able to move forward. Um, and this is, this is quite an undertaking, uh, and I agree, and, you know, with, with the retiring speaker, in that, you know, this phenomena called B and B, um, and, um, vacation homes, and, and bed and breakfast, although bed and breakfast may have been around for quite some time, it's not as catchy, and it's not as prolific as it is used today. Um, it's seems, and it continues to be a trend, that, um, has required us, and requires this body to be able to look at our statutes, current statutes, and how we can fit so that our statutes don't come in conflict, and, and, and don't contravene what is a good thing, for, um, a, not just a visitor experience, but also a host experience. Uh, I too have been, you know, in, in, in a travel, in travels, uh, have been fortunate to be able to stay in a vacation home, along with family members. And I tell you, when you go far away, thousands of miles away from here, and you're able to live, you know, stay with your family in a certain place, and not have to worry about, you know, uh, hotel rooms and whatnot, um, it, it, it makes that experience, um, that much better. And I think that's what we want to do here, is to continue to make sure that our tourists, that our visitors have the best experience possible, but then also provide so that it is in an environment that is conforming, that is safe, that, um, is not intrusive, or less intrusive, as people may think it could be. And then also making sure that, you know, those that are in this business, we want to make sure that they're operating it properly. Okay? And paying the taxes that is due from being able to operate this type, this type of operation. Now, is, does this bill, or will this thing have issues? Yes, it will. Okay? Madam Speaker, I think you and I both know, no bill is perfect, no legislation is perfect, no law is perfect. There are going to be issues, there are going to be, there are things that we're going to find down the road, where we can probably come back and tweak, we can probably make better, we can probably delete, we can probably add. But this is a good starting point. It's a great starting point, because it took a concern, it took an issue that was, that was, that was raised in the community, it had a discussion, and it came up with a product that, as a result of many discussions, many roundtable discussions, many, many discussions that had the input of many stakeholders, can come up with the best product at, at this time. So, and then that, that's, that's a major, and a great, major undertaking in that. You know, that said, though, however, I do want to make some inquiries, and, and maybe make some very minor amendments to this bill. Page four, line twenty, page four, line twenty. Add another L to cancellation.
Okay.
Okay?
Cancellation, add an extra L?
Yeah.
No objections or orders?
Okay, just to make sure that. Um, page nine, actually, line six, subsection two here. "Amplified sound that is audible beyond the property boundaries of the bed and breakfast home is prohibited." You know, Madam Speaker, what does that mean? Okay? Yeah, well, then, you know, when you say amplified, you, you give me a, a number of different things. It could be artificially loud, it could be loud, loud.
How many just a L?
That is audible beyond, this is, you know, this is our island, and, you know, I understand, and I know what we want to do is make sure that this is, this doesn't become a nuisance. But at the same time, we're not renting out a monastery. Okay? Um, that, that, there may be just a little bit too stringent. Okay? Um, you know, you remember, it's, it's a bed and breakfast, or it's, okay? It's, you, you want them to have fun, you want them to enjoy, yes, within reason, and, and, and different places, and, and, you know, different communities, neighbors have what's, what are standards of acceptability within this. It's just that, this, I can see this as a point of contention, you know, with, uh, with a homeowner who doesn't want this in their area. Okay? And it may cause, so I don't know. Just make it, instead of amplified, just make it loud. Excessively loud sound that is audible.
But would that, would that be covered in number one?
No, because then it said that number two, it refers to all times of the day.
No, nine P M. to five A M.
Ninety, nine to five P M. is quiet time. In other words, it's, you go to sleep. But what number two says is any time of the day. Please don't come into my neighborhood then on Saturdays, depending on my, my moods, and while I'm doing my yard, you may listen. Okay?
No, you do not listen. We don't allow that words.
You see I'm getting at?
So I mean, but, that's why I'm saying, the only thing is, if you want to use this it helps.
I understand. Can we, can we, thirty second recess?
Yeah, we'd like a brief recess.[1503.15] Senator, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I thank you for the recess. And I think that as a result of this, I guess, compromise or to be able to deal with the issue here is simply just on page nine, line six and seven, just go ahead and delete. Delete line six and seven, which is basically subsection two.
Okay, so on page nine, line six and seven, motion to delete. Any objection?
No objection. Thank you.
Sorted.
Okay.
Okay, Senator, you still have the floor.
Okay. And really, I think the, the last one is something I can actually talk to the author about. Doesn't that?
The last amendment?
My last issue.
Oh, okay.
It's something I can talk to the author about.
Okay, but nothing to change.
For the sake of moving this law.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator. So, is there anybody who would like to speak on the main motion? None? Senator, you can close.
Madam Speaker, I just want to thank my colleagues. Before we move this bill down to the voting file, thank my colleagues who rose in support and spoke and made the necessary amendments to better this bill. I want to say, I also want to add some sponsors of I May, Madam Speaker.
You may proceed.
To add, my brother Bill, you, I mean, my brother Frank. You, Speaker, Senator Espaldón, also on the bill.
Okay, on that motion?
Thank you.
Objection, sorted. And the motion to send 323-33 to the third reading file without any objection. So, ordered. Okay. Yes. All right, bill number... I don't see, Senator. Okay.
Sorry. Madam Speaker, we are now on bill three...
302.
302. Speaker Wampat, you're recognized on bill 302. As substituted.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to place bill 302-33 as substituted by the Committee on Higher Education, Culture, Public Libraries, and Women's Affairs, the third reading file. And if I could just discuss it briefly and make some technical corrections, if I may, on the bill.
Please proceed, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much again, Madam Speaker. First of all, on the title, and we had actually spoken to several specialists or, you know, experts in the language and the writing of the language and making sure that the technical corrections in terms of using the glota and lonet are in place. So, the very first one is 1234, where it says lugat houses, then it says lugat mananata. Should be really just instead mananata.
Madam Speaker, can you just spell it for the record?
Okay, so it will be, so delete where it says manma and then nata. Delete that and the new correct spelling will be maana i na dash ta.
Ma na.
I.
I.
Na.
Na.
Dash ta.
Dash ta. Did everybody get that? No objection? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I'll do all the amendments and then I'll speak on it, if I may. On page three, and the same thing where it says on line six, again, that language is technical, is the same as the spelling that I gave on the title.
No objection. Any objection? No objection, motion carries.
That's also reflected on line nine. Mananata.
Right. On that motion without objection, motion carries.
Line 10 is manmaga lahi. So, it's, but together, it's capital M A N and then small m maga lahi.
On that motion to delete the big M and put the lowercase m on maga?
And to make one word.
Use it one word?
Yes.
Manmaga lahi? No objection? Motion carries.
Then on the end of line 10, delete where it says janmanmagas, the way that is spelled. And then it's actually the same, capital M A N, lowercase m.
And that's one word again, Madam Speaker.
And one word.
Manmagas.
Manmagas.
Okay? On that, on that motion, no objection? Motion carries.
And then now, when it starts to speak on, throughout line 17, basically throughout, when it says guma, is to make sure, that's a technical correction, that there is a glota after the A, where it says guma glota. And that will be throughout.
On that motion to put the glota?
Yes, for all, after guma.
After guma?
Yes.
No objection?
That's a, okay, I'll explain. On line six.
Would you like, hold on. We're still there.
Okay.
So, Senator Ada, do you have an inquiry on that one?
Oh, no, he's just questioning.
Okay.
Yeah, he's, it's not, he's not asking so much about the glota after the guma. It was to explain one guma that has a different name that he's not familiar with. But the glota.
Okay, so on the glota, are there any objections? No objections? Motion carries.
And specifically to line six on page four, it will be guma maga haga and delete siha.
That would be on line five?
Line six. Line six, delete siha.
What? She's not here. It's on line five.
Line six?
It's on line five? All right, do you have the substituted version, Madam Speaker?
Yeah, so then you're right. Yeah, line five, you're right. So, delete siha.
So, on line five, page four, delete the word siha.
Yes.
Any objection? No objection? Motion carries.
Then line 17, the maga haga, is that there is a glota on maga. The A there. Maga glota.
What line are you on?
Line seven.
Line seven. Guma maga.
Haga. So, the M A G A glota.
On that... So, it's M A G A glota?
Glota.
Right?
Yes.
On that motion without objection? Motion carries.
Then on line 19, I mean, yeah, 19, it's...
Guba manamku?
I'm checking the, oh, guma manamku. At the end of manamku, there should be a glota.
Okay, on line 19, which is 27?
Yes.
It's guma.
Man.
Manamku. Glota.
Glota.
Okay? You guys got it? Any objection? No objection? Thank you, Senator Blas.
Senator Blas?
No, I'm just, he's nodding, he said no objection.
Oh, okay, very good, thank you. On line, line 20, which is 28, guma famalauan. Under famma, lau, where the lau there is that above the A, we need to put a lonet. That's that little tiny circle above the A.
On that motion to put the lonet on top of the A after L?
Yes.
No objection?
And the last one would be on, which is 34, where it says guma marianas. On the maria, we put a lonet also.
Would be after the I then?
Yes.
On that motion? No objections? Motion carries.
Thank you very much for all of those amendments. Because it's so important that especially if they are going to start to name these places, that it should be spelled correctly.
The right.
And, you know, hopefully pronounced even correctly.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, so just to briefly explain, if I may, then, Madam Speaker. The bill 302, the intention here is to promote knowledge of the history of the indigenous people of this region, the Chamoros, and to memorialize the historical figures of our past in an effort to reclaim history and realize our origin. And it's, you know, and so it's history. So, just a little bit about the history. That in the 17th century, the people of the Chamorro Archipelago, which is the Marianas, had experienced atrocities and subjugation as a result of the Spanish Empire. And they were expanding their campaign to establish missions and also to stake claims on lands. And it was no surprise, of course, to the people or the Marianas, what they were trying to do. So, the Chamoros then, and this is one thing people don't understand, Chamoros, yeah, at that time, and I believe even still today, really has a deep connection with their ancestors, their lands, and immemorial cultural practices. The Spanish missionaries, however, their ultimate goal was to fully abolish this connection, which incited our forefathers and foremothers, of course, to rally and fight for the protection of their native lands and liberty. Now, these battles were recognized as what we call the Chamorro-Spanish War. And there was, you know, the time period that took place was between, it was like 27 years altogether. The Chamorro population, which you believe at that time was 100,000. 100,000 pure Chamoros. At the end or the close of the war, the Chamoros were down to 5,000. So, the story of our ancestors then who stood up to the Spanish regime during this period of strife and upheaval and who fought, and many of them fought to their death for their homeland and the ability to maintain their heritage, must be committed to collective memory of the people of the Marianas. So, the intent then of this bill is to memorialize those who fought fearlessly for sovereignty during the Chamorro-Spanish War, to honor the ancestors of this region, who the Chamorro people, the Marianas, today are the descendants, and to perpetuate knowledge of Chamorro history to make relative the experiences of our past for insight as Guam proceeds into the future. So, as a result of that, then, as we know, we've just finished the 12th Festival of the Pacific Arts, and village huts were erected. And they are situated in the Sangsum Chamorro, which then now we want to name that area, the Sangsum Chamorro, which is the Chamorro village where the huts are being built, is lugat mananata. Mananata. With a description of maga lahi and manmagas siha, who died bravely in their last stand against the Spaniards during the Chamorro-Spanish War. Now, there are 27, actually, chiefs. But they built 34 huts. So, then we needed to do a lot of research after we've named the huts. And I would like to go through some of these because many of our colleagues, many of us, really, didn't know that these chiefs actually, you know, existed. We didn't know them by name. And some of the names we actually, actually used today as part of our everyday, you know, language and description of certain, you know, actions or events or what have you. But these are names that actually came from a book that's been researched extensively. We looked at that. We went to the university. We had to check with Mark as well. We called anyone who was, has a history of the Chamoros in the past also to give us the names. And these are the names that were given to us. Guma kaissa. Now, that one, kaissa, of course, is like the keeper of the rainbow. And everything is guma of the chief, of that particular chief. Then guma hagao, guma ladaho, guma agwalin, guma hula, guma chaifi, guma matapeng. And people think, of course, that, you know, matapeng was, we use the word as silliness, but it really is a chief. Guma ilau, guma chelif, guma kimadu, guma hurau. That we're nowhere familiar with. Guma tolahi. I think really, when you think about how we're using it, it's not really like tolahi, but like tolahi, you know, that type of thing. You're right. But, you know, many of those things, in those times, they were not really like names the way we use names today. We refer to people. But they're actually sometimes related to certain things that they've done. Some, something maybe that, you know, like today, some families, when you want to describe a family, you know, like guma, I mean, familia lalo, familia nganga, and all that. And it's because of what, you know, maybe they do as a profession. But in this particular case, this is what their chiefs were called. Guma gofisinan, guma kepuja, guma choco. And, you know, choco, for those who don't know, actually is the only one that has Chinese ancestry. But yet, the people felt that, you know, he, you know, actually stood up against the Spaniards and the Chamoros looked up to him and had declared him their chief. So, that's the, I mean, we, and the reason why I did it this way, where we stopped at that point, because if you've been down there and you see the shape of how it is structured, is that we were starting from, you know, the right, working our way up. And when you come to almost the center, although it's an odd number, not quite really at the center, guma maga haga. And that is that central concrete area that's flanked by 16 huts to the left and 17 on the right. And it has those three to four steps up. So, there are many, we've said always that the women are, we're a matrilineal society, that we looked up to our women. But throughout their history, and even in any of the writings by the Spaniards, they never named the woman. Rather, there was a, there's one where they had mentioned this woman who was very influential in her community, but instead they only referred to her as the mother-in-law of this individual. So, I don't know what the reasoning was then to never really want to mention any of the women. So, in this particular case, when you're looking at how the huts are being situated, and if we are a matrilineal society and the women were very influential in the homes and in the community, that then that was the hut specifically to designate then as the guma maga haga. Then you continue on with guma poio, guma daun, guma guafak, guma maka, maka dao, guma sanglo, guma ke dao. You're right, there it is, guma ke dao. Guma olanuk, guma puni, guma tani, guma soihan, guma, okay. And then those are all the chiefs. So, all the chiefs then are listed really all the way down to 19 with the exception of the guma maga haga. But then we're told in history too, is that there were homes that were designated for certain things. Like, for example, you know, when there's a place for the elderly to go to, so therefore it was guma manamku. And then the women also, and that's where, you know... And then the women also, and that's where, you know, the teaching of the young girls, and preparing, you know, the young girls for, you know, for duties, I suppose, that young girls and women would do, and prepare them for that. Guma Lalahi, after the young men, Guma Famaguun, Guma Gereru, and that's, you know, of course, some of the fighters, Guma Manuritau, Guma Joamti, and the Joamti, as you know, is the Surhanos and Surhanas. So that then actually lists all now, and will name all thirty-four huts, the Chamorro huts that were built for the Festback, but then again, at the same time, because it is in the rear of the Isengson Chamorro, which we know as the Chamorro Village, and more importantly, by naming them, getting people more familiar with it, we're teaching our history, we're, we're teaching our children, of course, that what we want to do is to continue to perpetuate knowledge of the Chamorro history, and to tell them about, you know, their past as well. So, I ask my colleagues if, you know, to please consider Bill number three oh two then as not just substituted, but further amended on the floor this afternoon. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a five-second recess. The legislature's back from recess. Speaker Wampat, you still recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you for that recess with the suggestion that, when you, when you consider, of course, that these, the huts are actually all in what we call Isengson Chamorro, the Chamorro Village, and the Chamorro Village is under the purview of the Department of Chamorro Affairs, and, and so I've asked legal counsel, basically, would be to, to add, you know, a section that this will be then the responsibility of the Department of Chamorro Affairs. I personally have had a conversation with, you know, the director himself, and he's very happy. Individuals also, who at the same time in which this bill was heard, were several members who were being confirmed by the legislature, who are going to be members of the, of Kaha, who are, you know, cultural and folklore artists, and they're definitely in, in
Support.
Very support, very much in support of this. Thank you very much.
On the motion then to have the Department of Chamorro Affairs responsible of the amendments being done by legal counsel, I just need a motion to accept that mo, yes?
I'd say one question for the Department of
You want to go ahead and ask that question, Senator Blas? We're on the motion, Senator Blas, you recognize on Speaker Wampat's motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, you know, it's one thing to say they're responsible, but what does that, what in essence is that responsibility?
Yes, because it's under the Village, and in the Village, they do, they do charge, you know, for the use of, to rent facilities, to use the different, remember the ground space now, the booths, you're right, and every Wednesday night when they come out. So, the, what this would do, just really either, they're saying that the cheapest way for them to do this right now, if they want to do it soon, will be to paint over with, you know, stencil, the names of these huts before, you know, they're able to determine or identify any additional funds to put something a little bit more permanent.
Five-second recess.
We're gonna take a five-second recess. Speaker Wampat.
Thank you very much. I do have the amendment that was prepared by
If you can read it, please.
And I will read it, is to add a new C, and it will read, "The director of the Chamorro Village shall prepare the signs and placards necessary and have those posted consistent with the beauty and theme of the Chamorro Village and surrounding area."
On that motion, anybody wish to speak? If not, motion carries. Anybody else wishing to speak? On, on the main motion? If not, any objections to putting it down on the third reading?
No.
Okay. Motion carries. Senator, I'm gonna recognize the Majority Leader on, on Bill three oh nine, am I right? As substituted?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise actually to a point of order, because Bill number three oh nine is already in the voting file, and the sponsor has a request to make an additional amendment to that bill. So, now with saying the House rules, I move that we revert back to motions for the purposes of pulling that bill to the second reading file.
On that motion, without any objection?
So now that we're in motions, I move to bring Bill three oh nine dash three-three, as substituted by the Committee on Guam, U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary, and probably also an amended on the floor, whatever that heading reads, from the voting file, to place it on the top of the second reading file.
Right.
So the motion was to bring three oh nine dash three-three from the voting file to the top of the second reading file.
On that motion, without any objections, motion carries. Senator, I'm still gonna recognize you on the, I'm sorry, Senator Bretton McCready, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Senator Rispicio, who is a co-sponsor of this amendment that I'm about to proffer. This would go on page, line eight, page one of the bill, and we're gonna add a new section, and it should read, "A, the Guam Police Department shall, beginning in fiscal year 2017, conduct a police training cycle for at least forty candidates."
Are we gonna fabricate it and do section by section?
No, it's just two sections.
Okay.
And, "Section B, the chief of police shall, for fiscal years 2017 through 2021, determine the total cost to conduct a recruitment cycle for at least forty police cadets, which he shall transmit in his proposed budget to Imagalan Guahan for inclusion in the executive budget requests that Imagalan Guahan submit annually to Elihas Laturen Guahan, period."
On that motion?
And, and Madam Chair, this would, this would create the solution that was brought up yesterday during the testimony of the body.
Okay. I have Senator Frank Blas, who wishes to speak, on this amendment. Senator Blas, you recognize?
On the amendment, Madam Speaker, just on, on section B here, where it says, "The chief police shall, for fiscal years 2017 to 2021, determine the total cost to conduct a recruitment cycle of at least forty police cadets," and I'm sure, "per fiscal year." So after the words, after the word cadets?
Yep.
"per fiscal year."
Per fiscal year.
Yes.
On that motion, to the amendment, no objection, motion carries. Senator McCready?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and just for technical amendment for legal counsel, if in the title they can switch it from promotions, period, take out the period, promotions and recruitment, period.
On that motion, no objections.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion to send Bill three oh nine to the voting file.
That as amended?
As amended.
Further amended on the floor?
Further amended on the floor. And thank you to
On the motion, you're welcome, no objection, motion carries.
And thank you to Senator Rispicio for his prompt, and Senator Blas as well.
Sorry you had to include that one.
Bill number three thirteen dash thirty-three, Senator Tom Ada, one minute. That's what he told me.
Speaker, I move to place Bill three one three dash three-three down to the third reading, and I'd like to discuss it.
Yes, you may proceed. Oh, wait, as amended, right, Senator?
As amended by the Committee on Transportation, Infrastructure, Lands, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs, and Recruitment.
Okay, so you may proceed then with that bill.
Thank you. So, Madam Speaker, Bill three one three is a bill that is needed to provide needed land to the Guam Water Works Authority in order for them to proceed with their program of either building additional water reservoirs or replacing some of the, the really old reservoirs that are in existence. So Bill three one three is specifically for property in Santa Rita, and the property we're talking about is about twenty-eight hundred square meters, and twenty-eight hundred square meters is about point seven of an acre, seven tenths of an acre. Now, the property that we're looking at belongs to the Chamorro Land Trust. The Guam Water Works Authority and the Chamorro Land Trust have met, and they've sat down and, and ironed this thing out, and the Chamorro Land Trust, by way of a resolution from the Chamorro Land Trust Commission, has agreed to transfer this amount of property over to the Guam Water Works Authority so that they can construct their water reservoir. And of course, the transfer will basically be on a fee simple basis, or, let's see. Well, well, Guam, Chamorro Land Trust will be compensated for this property that is being given over to the Guam Water Works Authority. Now, this, this, of course, is important, because by allowing Guam Water Works Authority to construct on this piece of property, it will have that community-wide positive benefit to the surrounding areas, the surrounding communities. So, the Guam Water Works will pay for the cost of appraisal of the property, and then from that appraisal, they will then sit down and determine then how payment is to be made. And most likely, it will be done as a fee simple, and this will be accomplished within a hundred and eighty days. So the bill does provide definite timelines as to when things need to be, to get done, so that six months from now, all these transactions would have been completed, and the Guam Water Works could then move on with its project. So that, Madam Speaker, is what Bill three one three does. It would allow them to build a one-million-gallon water storage tank.
On the motion, does anyone here like to speak? There being none. So on the motion then to send three thirteen to the third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. Senator, you also recognize for Bill three one four?
Yes, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill three one four is similar, the only difference is that it is in
Can you do the motion first?
Oh, I move that, I like move that Bill three one four be placed
As amended?
As amended, be placed in the third reading, and I'd like to speak on it.
You may proceed.
Thank you. So, Madam Speaker, Bill three one four is very similar to Bill three one three. The only difference is that in Bill three one four, it proposes to trans, to authorize the transfer of Chamorro Land Trust property over to the Guam Water Works in Dedidoo. It's an area to transfer, an area of eighteen hundred square meters, which is about point four, four tenths of an acre. And, and again, this would allow the Guam Water Works Authority to construct an additional water reservoir, which will benefit a large part of the community. So, so that's, that's what Bill three one four does, Madam Speaker.
Anyone who would like to speak on the motion? Senator Agun, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly stand in support of the legislation. My only question is, a part, particular verbiage that has been added to similar provisions where, in fact, Chamorro Land Trust property was given to another agency for a specific purpose, and if, in fact, those agencies do not utilize it for the purposes set forth in that piece of legislation, then the property automatically reverts back to the inventory of the Chamorro Land Trust. I don't see that verbiage here, unless I missed it, Madam Speaker, in terms of making sure that if GWA does not use it for this purpose, or for a complementary purpose that would benefit the community, then certainly the property, the reversionary clause, I think, would be appropriate. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So, Madam Speaker, on, on, on each of those bills, three one three, three one four, and three one five, there is a section which provides for a reversionary clause, that if Water Works does not construct, begin, begin construction begin, begin construction of the facility within five years from the date of the enactment of this act, then this property goes back to the Chamorro Land Trust.
Senator, I know I'm not supposed to ask you a question from up here, but on your reversionary clause, you're making also a rezone from A to PF. So, if it reverts back, does it still stay as a public facility? Or you want to do that same language that it goes back to, again, what its original zone is?
Well, it, it will go back, and, and Madam Speaker, at this point, instead of complicating it, I think the important part is that there is a reversionary clause, and when it comes to that, which I, I assure you, I don't think it will, because the construction of these water reservoirs is actually under court order from the federal government.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, on the motion then to send 314 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Senator, you have one more, 315.
Yes, Madam Speaker, I move that Bill 315 be placed in the
As amended.
As amended. Be placed in the third reading file, and I'd like to discuss it.
You may proceed.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, again, this is a, a very similar in language. The only difference from 313 and 314 is that with 315, Guam Water Works needs additional property in, in, in Tumuni, in Tumon. So, right now Guam Water Works has a water reservoir right next to the Nissan company. You'll see this big water tank that's up there, it's got Nissan printed on it. So, they need an additional
5,686 square meters.
They need about 1.4 acres
1.4.
Of land there, and what they're going to do is they're going to, which will allow for the replacement of the existing 1 million gallon water storage, and for the construction of an above-ground 2 million gallon water storage. So, they're basically going to build another water reservoir that's twice the size of the one that exists up there. And, and so, the, that's what Bill 315 does. Now, I just want to make one point, that I know that when, when, when these bills were introduced, the initial reaction I got from someone was, "What? We're taking land away from the Chamorro Land Trust, and we're, the Chamorro Land Trust is selling?" But we should not forget that legislation was also passed just several months ago wherein the committee actually went out and identified properties that were just laying there, not doing what it was set aside for, and we passed legislation which returned back over 100 acres of land back into the Chamorro Land Trust inventory. So, I think in anticipation of the fact that, you know, the utilities are going to be needing some properties, we're talking here just with these three locations, probably about two, no more than three acres, but earlier this year, 105 acres was actually transferred into the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Is anyone who would like to participate in the discussion of the main, on the main motion? There being none, so on the motion to send 315 to the third reading file without any objection, so ordered. Bill, let me see, Bill 141, Mr. Vice Speaker.
Madam Speaker, can we take a short recess for a second?
Take a brief recess? The legislature's back in session. Bill number 141, Mr. Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move Bill 141 as introduced to the third reading file and ask for an opportunity to, to address the body.
And is it, wait, I'm trying to see, is it a substituted version?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay, so you may proceed. As introduced.
Madam Speaker, this is another one of my pieces of legislation, and my attempts to try to work towards a healthier community. When we, about 10 years ago, Madam Speaker, you and I and a former colleague championed the cause of Natasha, to have no smoking within, with, in restaurants or 10 feet from the entrance of, of buildings. One of our other colleagues has introduced legislation to protect infants against smoking in cars. I've introduced legislation, and I'm thankful to all of you, we've increased the taxes All of these efforts were in an attempt by, by us to address the need of providing protections to our people, and encourage our people to lead a healthier lifestyle by not smoking, by making it impractical for them to be smoking in restaurants, and we've even passed legislation just recently to, to ban it in bars. And to make it so that in very few places can you smoke. I mean, the joke is, is you can't, the only place you can smoke is in your backyard now, but maybe that, that should be where it's at. But the thing is, Madam Speaker, in spite of all this legislation, Guam still has the unenviable distinction of being number one in the country as far as people smoking, and especially smoking for those under the age of 18. In order to address that issue, I tried to find legislation to, to address it, and I did some research, and thankfully to some advocates on, on island, and, and I was also provided with a considerable amount of data and research. It was brought to my attention that the one way to try to reduce the number of people addicted to nicotine was to increase the smoking age, the legal smoking age, from 18 to 21. Many people will ask, "Why? What, what difference is that going to make?" Madam Speaker, the fact that we have kids, we have the distinction of having the highest number of, percentage of our youth in high school and in middle school smoking is because of the fact that these kids can, can very easily find someone in their high school who is 18 and can buy cigarettes. But by increasing the age to 21, it makes it even more difficult. It's no longer just the super senior that you can possibly go to, or the kid who has, who needs friends and, and is willing to go buy you cigarettes because he's stuck Now, you're going to have to try to find someone who is 21 in order to be, to be able to purchase cigarettes. And it wasn't just trying to cut off the ability or the accessibility that, that our young smokers will have, but Madam Speaker, many of you remember that there was the big tobacco lawsuit in the 90s, and thousands and thousands and thousands of pages of depositions were done in that mega tobacco settlement suit. And in calling through there, people who were doing the research noticed that a lot of the tobacco companies, and their advisors, their scientists, and their, their consultants were very concerned about the fact that the smoking age not changed from 18. Because their own scientists, for the tobacco companies, their very own scientists, their own consultants, all provided testimony and depositions that stated, "If a person isn't addicted by the time they're 24," the cha, oh, wait a minute, let me get that straight. If a person isn't addicted by the time that they're 21, the chance of them smoking and continuing to smoke until their adulthood are pretty, are, are slim to none. So, trying to, to make sure that tobacco isn't accessible to the 18 and 19 and 20-year-olds is a way to try to make sure that our young people aren't addicted by that age and continue to be addicted into their adulthood. I know this, Madam Speaker, because I have members in my family that are addicted. They try as hard as possible, and they keep slipping back. I remember when mother was sick, and we would lock down the house at 2:00. I'd be woken at 3:00 or 4:00, "Can you undo the alarm so I can go outside and take a cig, smoke a cigarette?" I mean, addiction, addiction is frightening. And this addiction is not just a, if it were positive, had any positive effect, it just does not. I mean, the stats show that annually, annually, 460,000, 460,000 people die of tobacco-related If you took all of the car crashes in the United States, all the HIV and AIDS deaths, all the cancer deaths, all the heart attacks, the suicides, the opioid and other drug overdoses, it still wouldn't come close. I think many of you received an email from one of the local advocates of a story that showed that the number one killer in the country is, is, is tobacco. And you saw that chart where it was, the, the number of deaths attributed to tobacco was 10 times more than for alcohol. But we, as a country, are unable to address it. I'm embarrassed, to admit it, that my refusal to go with you to the, to the national convention this year is because of my disgust with the national party, and this president that I went to three different conventions to, to support, whose campaign I started in 2008 here on Guam, because he had asked George Bush to send the Framework Convention for Tobacco Control to the, to the U.S. Senate for Ratification, who I thought was going to be the leader to try to control tobacco in this country, has dismayed me to no end. I can't even see disappointed. He has angered me. The hypocrisy of asking for, writing to the president for the political purpose of having, being able to announce that you asked the president to send the, the convention to the Congress, Congress for Senate ratification when you were a freshman senator, but to not do it within these eight years that you've been president? I'd be embarrassed, and I'm furious at him. And the number of people that die from tobacco, it should be a controlled, one, I mean, Schedule I controlled substance, but for the fact that I've been told by my political analyst in my office, "You need Virginia." "You need the southern states." But I don't know how one can cover their eyes to the fact that 460,000 people a year die. To put that into perspective, that was more than all the servicemen that were killed in the Pacific area during World War I, I mean, World War II. More. And that was on an annual, and this is on an annual basis. But for political expediency and for the amount of money that the tobacco lobby is paying, we're going to turn a blind eye to it? I know I'd never be able to, to move tobacco into the Schedule I drug listing. But there is something that I can do to try to assist in trying to discourage our young people from starting this horrible addiction. In utilizing the research that was done by the tobacco companies themselves, I was able to find that the one thing that you could do, and the one thing that they're most afraid is this idea of moving the drinking, I mean, the smoking age from 18 to 21. Even some of the local tobacco companies have made it known that their biggest fear, they wouldn't mind if you increased the tax, maybe even double the tax. They, they wouldn't care. What they're concerned about is this increasing the, or raising the, the legal smoking age to 21, because it ruins their market. They are dependent on the fact that you can take 15, 16, 17, and 18-year-olds, get them addicted, and they're stuck with you until they die in their 50s. get them addicted, and they're stuck with you until they die in their fifties. I'm hoping that we, as leaders here on Guam, can do for ourselves what we can do for ourselves without the Framework Convention, without the national party worrying about Virginia and Alabama, that we can do the right thing here on Guam. And we can start in this small way by raising the legal smoking age from eighteen to twenty-one. Many of you, and I know all of you actually, were visited by the students, the Youth for Youth group, and many of the advocates from the American Cancer Society and Cancer Care, and that were presented with Dr. David's Twenty-One Reasons for Twenty-One. I don't need to go through them here. But it was a very good presentation by Dr. And I'm really hoping that all of you will be able to support this piece of legislation. This bill also has a second component. It also addresses the issue of vaping. And in it, it also raises the age at which you are able to purchase the liquids for your vape to twenty-one. Various states have done this across the country. And I know many people are saying, "Well, that science isn't there." If any of you have driven behind some of these cars and you think that they're having a backfire or something was happening in the car, and this huge cloud of smoke comes The amount of nicotine that's in some of these, these small, tiny, little vials of liquid that is put into these vape machines is enough to get people addicted to nicotine. Some of them claim the science, it's a way of stepping down from smoking cigarettes and it's like a nicotine patch or something. It's lowering the amount of... It is still encouraging smoking. And I know many of you thought that I was the original nanny when I wanted to prohibit the sale of even candy cigarettes, to make it think that it was sexy or something glorious. I mean, I'm really happy that in the country, we finally have gotten to the point where smoking is not allowed in commercials and it's not supposed to be as much as possible to be prohibited in movies to glamorize it. But we owe it to our children to do everything and anything that we can to make sure that they live to be as old as we are. As much as I joke about that, Madam Speaker, and I lament my age, I'm hoping that my niece and my nephew will be able to live to be as old as I am, because they'll be able to break their addiction. This anti-smoking campaign of mine didn't start just recently. My anti-smoking was since I was a little kid. My mother and father were of the generation at the turn, right after the war, where it was encouraged. Everybody had cigarettes. Mother was a smoker. And I was awful. I would say things that I don't think I should say publicly now to her whenever I would see her smoking, but I would embarrass her in front of my aunts and my grandmother, to where she finally realized that the best thing to do, rather, since she couldn't slap me, since Grandma was there, was just to stop smoking whenever I was around. And then she realized she didn't need to smoke all the time and she stopped. She developed breast cancer when she was sixty-something. She was able, thankfully, because she stopped smoking in her forties, she was able to put it in remission. And she died at a very old age of ninety-four. I don't try to take credit for her longevity that's in the genes, but the thing is, is that I'm hoping that we can. I encourage all my godchildren, my compadres and commodores hate me, those that smoke, because the first thing I tell my godchildren, I don't ask them to refer to me as Nino BJ or Senator or Judge or whatever, the first thing I try to get them to talk, to learn to say when they're able to talk is, "Mommy, Daddy, I love you. I want you to live. And so I'm hoping that the rest of you will join me in this lifelong fight that I've had to try to encourage a healthier lifestyle and longevity within our community. The one stat that those of you that came to the hearing would probably be surprised about was presented by a person from Select Care. And, no, it wasn't Select Care, it was Staywell, I'm sorry, it was Staywell. She came in and she was, she worked for them, and she came in to present testimony that when people get older, especially in my age group, the cost of our health care runs about forty or fifty thousand dollars a year for all of whatever normal ailments we have at our age. But she testified, and it's in the committee report, that for people suffering from emphysema and other drug, I mean, other smoking-related illnesses, the annual cost for their medical care, my same age group, our same age group, is four-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars a year. One of the other senators was shocked. He said, "If nothing else, if nothing else, the thought of us trying to find a way to reduce the cost of medical care in our community should be the reason why we support this legislation." Because we cannot, as a community, afford to continue to take care of people with all of the related illnesses and the expense of the illnesses because of their smoking. And very quickly, just so I have it on the record, since Dr. David did it, I just want to just quickly read the twenty-one reasons why it should be twenty-one. Number one, tobacco remains the single largest preventable cause of death on Guam. Number two, Guam has the highest smoking rate of all U.S. states and territories. Three, most Guam smokers started before the age of twenty-one. Four, majority of tobacco users in Guam are addicted. Five, the earlier you start tobacco use, the more likely you are to be addicted. Six, in mathematical models, raising the legal age of tobacco use to twenty-one will have substantial positive impact on public health and save lives. Seven, the model is being validated by real-life data. Eight, there is no adverse impact on business with this new law. Seven, majority of the population support raising the minimum age for tobacco consumption. In fact, the national polls show seven out of ten Americans support the increase, I mean, the raising of the minimum age for smoking. Even among smokers, they're in favor of raising the minimum age. Ten, youth support the measure as well. And I know that all of you have gotten numerous calls from Youth for Youth and some of the other youth groups. I think some of you saw the letter, the email that I got from someone at the university who I spoke, whose group I spoke to earlier this year, and was very upset that they were graduating and the legislation still hadn't gotten through. We've gotten all the youth together. Number eleven, pediatricians who care for children and youth support raising the legal age of tobacco use. Twelve, raising the legal age to twenty-one also protects the younger children, since it's going to make it more difficult for them to be able to purchase them. Thirteen, others are enacting this law. Guam could have been the first in the country when I introduced this legislation. There were just a number of cities. Hawaii was thinking about it about the same time that I introduced the legislation. They recently passed it, and so did California. If we pass this, we will be the third jurisdiction besides various counties and jurisdictions in the states. Fourteen, e-cigarettes are toxic. Fifteen, e-cigarettes contain nicotine, which is highly addictive. Sixteen, even if they claim to be nicotine-free, likely there is still nicotine in the liquids. Seventeen, e-vapor also contains immeasurable amounts of carcinogens. Eighteen, e-cigarettes may cause collateral damage. Nineteen, e-cigarettes have been known to have problems with being explosive. Twenty, we, as a community, have to be concerned about the fact that youth vaping is rising very rapidly on Guam. The stats that were done last year show that we have children in middle school that are vaping, middle school. Twenty-one, e-cigarettes are tobacco companies. Lorillard bought Blue, also acquired Sky Cigarettes in 2013. R.J. Reynolds makes V U S E and markets them through television ads in Colorado and Utah. Altria Group introduced Mark X, an e-cigarette, in June of 2013, and is testing marketing in Indiana, also acquired Green Smoke in 2014. British-American tobacco markets Vape in the U.K. and has acquired CN Creative. Swisher International also makes e-cigarettes. So the tobacco companies are getting us coming and going. They want us to get our children addicted before they're twenty-one. They want to keep them as their addicted market until they die. And now they're buying out all the e-cigarettes companies so they can continue to keep them addicted to cigarettes. Madam Speaker, I thank you very much for allowing me to speak as long as I had, but this has been a lifelong passion of mine to try to have people live healthy and live long, healthy lives. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. On the motion, Senator Tom Etta.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of Bill 141. And, you know, when I was growing up, I, the social climate was very conducive to picking up a cigarette and smoking. TV commercials gave the image that it was macho to have a cigarette in your hand, you know, make, blow the rings, circles, and all that stuff. The school I went to, the high school, it allowed the boys to smoke. Basically, the criteria was, if you got them, smoke them. And my father allowed me to smoke. I went out on weekends, cut grass around the neighborhood and whatnot, earned my own money. And he says, "If you can afford a pack of cigarettes, you can go ahead and smoke it." So I did. And so I smoked, starting at the age of thirteen, and I smoked for about thirty years. And at one point, got to the point, especially when I was in the military, that I was up to three packs a day. So I was, I was really heavy into it. Now, I'm glad to say that I've kicked the habit, and it's been over two decades since I've, since I've kicked it. And I must say that as I look back, I, you know, I ask myself, "Why did you do it?" It hasn't been any benefit. The first car accident I got into is because I was smoking while I was driving, and I dropped an ash on my pants leg there, and next thing I knew, I was trying to brush that thing off, and boom, I hit the car in front of me. I always used to watch the TV shows, you know, you watch the actors, how they wake up in the morning and they roll over and they kiss their wives on the mouth. I woke up in the morning and I self-check, and I said, "No way am I going to go kiss her." Because it, your mouth smells and tastes like a herd of cattle was there grazing overnight. And so I was, you know, and then I finally got a ultimatum, you know, there's a second bedroom. You can, you can sleep over there if you want, but you ain't sleeping with me. So, you know, all those things put together, and I was able to kick the habit. And I'm glad that I did. So I just, you know, I just, I, I used to oppose these kinds of bills that, that would limit the age of drinking to twenty-one, and now the age of smoking to twenty-one, because I always thought, "Hey, if that young man is considered mature enough to sign up for the military and we're going to send him off at the age of eighteen, then he should be able to make that same choice for cigarettes." But then only to find out later that the military started changing its perspective and wanted to keep the soldiers healthy. And so when you go on base, you can't drink on base if you're below twenty-one. That's why they have to come out here. I'm not sure what it is for tobacco, but that's probably not too far from twenty-one if it isn't, if it isn't there already. But, you know, I think that perspective of, even in the military, yeah, it's true, we can send you to war and, and you can get killed at the age of eighteen, but if we can keep you healthy, you know, by deferring that, that choice to smoke, then certainly we should do that. So I think now we've come, you know, from when I was thirteen years old, where the social climate was very conducive to want to pick up a cigarette and smoke. Now we are, the social climate has changed. And, you know, being a smoker really is, is not as macho as it was when I was growing up. You know, and I certainly won't deny the fact that there was also another aspect to smoking in that it was, it was when I, I was nervous and I needed something to do with my hands, I picked up a cigarette. I used to chew a lot of pugua. Oh, I tell you, pugua and pulu had to go with cigarettes, you know? But now I don't chew pugua, and I don't smoke, and I don't miss it. So if by helping, if there's, if by, by increasing the age of, the legal limit for smoking to twenty-one, then certainly I want to contribute to that, because I really think that it is for the benefit of our community. the benefit of our community by not providing that social climate that is conducive for our young folks to want to pick up a cigarette. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. On the motions, anybody else who would like to speak? Senator Tony Etta?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Gosh, where do you begin, especially on a bill like this? You know, it was several, several weeks ago, when several groups come, came to see me at my office. They wanted to make an appointment to see, to see if I would support Bill 141. So I made that appointment with them, and they came in. And it was all because a public hearing hasn't been held for the bill. I said, Senator, we need your help to get this bill publicly heard. And that's what upset me the most, was that they needed to go around, look for 10 other co-sponsors for a bill to get it publicly heard. And I said, that shouldn't be. That should not be. So we spoke about the bill, and I told them that I did have my reservations about it, because when do we start treating our young adults like adults? When you're 18, you are an adult. A young adult, but still an adult. At 18, I joined the military. I got married. By age 20, I had my second child. At 18, I signed my first lease, my first contract, at least, to let me stay in an apartment with my family. 18, because I became an adult. Granted, young adults don't always make the right decisions in life, but neither do older I think maybe we should start looking at, instead of mandating what adults can't do, maybe we should look at mandating, educating our children younger on the dangers of smoking, on the dangers of drinking, on the dangers of salt and saturated fat and sugars. It's just difficult to start taking away what an 18-year-old can and cannot do. At 18, he can become a policeman and protect lives. At 18, he can go and register and join the military. At 18, he can go and register and get a firearms. There's many things you can do at 18. I'm not against protecting our children. But we cannot consider our young adults, our 18- to 21-year-olds, children. They will make decisions that will change their lives. They will make right decisions, and they will make wrong decisions, but they will make a decision. When my children were growing up, I've always prayed that they would make the right decisions in life. All we can do is guide them. When they went to school, I've always prayed that they make the right decisions and stayed But we can't always keep regulating our 18- to 21-year-olds. When does it, when does it end? What is going to be the next piece of legislation that comes onto this floor, that one of our colleagues will introduce and sponsor? Is it going to be a sugar bill? So we can protect our young children from diabetes and childhood obesity? Is it going to be a salt and saturated fat bill, so we can protect our children from high blood pressure? What is, what is it going to be next to protect the 18- to 21-year-olds? We want to protect our children, let's start educating them younger. Let's start educating them on the dangers of smoking, of drinking. But we can't keep pushing up the age. Because if that's the case, then maybe we need to start looking at, you don't become an adult criminal until you're 21. Then we'll just keep all those 18- to 21-year-olds at D Y A. We're going to protect our children, let's protect our children. But 18-year-old, the 21-year-old, they're young adults. They're capable of making decisions. And we proved that right here in this body, when we all voted for 17-year-olds to start I am not a smoker. I have never been a smoker, but that's my individual choice. That was my choice. That was my wants, that was my desires. This is, I know it's difficult, because we want to do it. But let's do it for our children. Let's educate them younger. Let's mandate that our schools educate our elementary school children. Start there, so that by the time they become junior high students, they're going to say, I don't even want to see a cigarette. What do we say? We start them younger? The younger they start learning, the greater the success? Well, let's start educating them younger. Because the only thing that's going to happen is the 18- or 19-year-old is going to look for a 22-year-old to buy them a pack of cigarettes. It was mentioned that we have the highest smoking rate here, but there's a lot of things that we have the highest, too, here. We have the highest casualties from war here, and a lot of them were young adults. I'm all for protecting our children from the dangers of smoking, from the dangers of drinking, but we need to look at a different way of doing it than to regulating our 18- to 21-year-olds, our young adults, young adults, who are capable of making independent decisions. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Torres.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This is clearly one of those issues that can be debated forever, and it depends on what side of the personal autonomy and personal freedoms argument you're on. I had the great privilege of receiving a group of, a group of young adults, actually pre-adults, into my office from the Youth for Youth organization to discuss this, and just listening to them gave me a new perspective on why I support Bill 141-33. And we talk about personal freedoms, and that's, that's, that's fine, that's valid, it's a valid point. But I think when you're, when you're dealing with an issue that affects the broad public safety and health, and it's not, it's not one person taking risks and affecting only themselves, because we do understand the secondhand nature of smoking and vaping and that sort of thing. So it can be argued that when I, when I choose to do something, it's not about me, it really affects anybody in the, in the area that can be impacted by secondhand smoking. But I was thinking about how far the government should go in regulating certain things and determining what ages are appropriate to regulate and what ages are not. And specifically with adults, I was thinking about this idea of, well, should we now increase the age of smoking from 18 to 21? And I go back to the history of how the government regulates a lot of things, and I was reminded about the seatbelt law, and how at one point, the seatbelt law was the most ludicrous concept that anyone could come up with. Cars were large, cars were safe, cars belonged to people, they chose to go on the road with them, they should be able to do whatever they want within their personal space, within their personal property, on gas that they paid for themselves. But no one can argue that there is an inherent risk to the person behind the wheel and anybody within the vicinity of that person should they get into an accident. So that sort of thing is sound. The reason that I support this bill of increasing the minimum age from 18 to 21 is the notion that this product is so addictive, it is so addictive, and it is addictive and dangerous primarily to a certain age group in terms of locking them into a lifelong addiction. And that's where I think it warrants us raising the age from 18 to 21 by its pure addictive nature. I'm reminded, too, that a lot of what we experience these days, and this, I was reminded by this when I was speaking to the kids, and they were talking about how a lot of kids at school, you know, have vapors now, and it's a chic thing, and it's like the cultural icon right now, the status symbol for a lot of them. And I thought about the culture, this whole culture of smoking, at what time tobacco was so chic. You look at old movies, and there's the most glamorous, elegant, educated, sophisticated people with cigarettes between their hands and smoke wafting, and that was cool. And at that point, we didn't, we thought that it was fine, and it was not a health risk. Well, over time, we understood the complexity of it. What I want to do is be part of a policy that discourages an unhealthy cultural practice, the cultural practice of smoking from an early age, and an age that is, once you're addicted at that age, the likelihood of breaking the addiction is very, very hard. I want to be part of that process, and I think that it's important, notwithstanding personal freedoms and all that. I'm reminded not only of trying to, trying to not encourage a culture at an early age, but I'm reminded to, because I recently visited with a doctor, and the first question on the, that was posed to me is, are you a smoker? That should suggest to us that that's number one vice for health. So as much as I, I don't want to take personal freedoms, I think that we have an obligation as a government to regulate those things that we know pose a clear danger to public And one of the dangers is also entrapping people in an addictive, a highly addictive product, that they have remote chances of breaking the habit later on in life, even if they choose to. So I want to commend the author of this bill. He's been championing this anti-tobacco and high regulation of tobacco products for quite a while, and I know that it's a very unpopular move. I never committed to supporting this bill until I heard all the arguments, and the more I hear the arguments to and fro, the more I'm convinced that we owe this to future generations who are highly impressionable to help dissuade a culture from developing within their age group. Situs Massey.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motions, anybody else who would like an opportunity to speak? Mr. Vice Speaker, would you like to close?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I don't think I could have stated it more eloquently than the last, the retiring speaker. So I'm not going to add anything I have, my staff gave me a whole bunch of things I'm supposed to say, but it couldn't be more eloquent than what was just said. I do have, however, realize that in the year since I introduced the legislation, that we didn't amend it, and the title is going to have to be amended to the Youth Protection Act of 2017, and the effective date is going to have to be January the 1st, 2017, on page 7.
Okay, one second.
I don't know if it's more appropriate to call it the Youth Protection Act 2016, if it's going to become effective on the 1st of the 17th, but anyway, the effective date is going to be, is 2017, so...
So January 2017?
Yes.
Okay, on that amendment, no objection? So order it. And then what were you saying earlier in the title?
On the title, I'm not sure. If I call it the Youth Protection Act 2016, since it's not going to go into effect until 2017, or to call it the Youth Protection Act 2017?
2017, yeah.
17.
Yes, so it'll be the...
Or just the Youth Protection Act.
Okay, Youth Protection Act, okay. On that amendment, no objection? So order it.
And I want to thank my colleagues for their exhortations and their comments, and if they would have no objection, I would like to add Senator Tom Etta and Senator Mary Camacho Torres as co-sponsors.
Okay, on that motion, Senator Etta and Senator Torres to be co-sponsors, no objection?
And wait, I forgot, Sandra Espaldón also spoke, sorry.
Sandra Espaldón, did you speak? No, he didn't speak.
Yes, he did. No, he didn't?
Not, no, he didn't. Oh, God, don't make me sound older than, you know...
If he wishes me to speak, I'll speak.
You can say one word, "I support," and that's it?
That's not one word, Madam Speaker, that's two.
Two words, okay, two words.
Okay, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, so then...
Madam Speaker, I know it's unusual, again, one more time, but only because I did get a question asked by a constituent who's watching right now, and it's a question that, that this constituent was asking me to ask the author, because I do not know the answer to it at this point. And so if I may, Madam Speaker, with your indulgence, I mean, you can say yes, you can say no, and I'll leave it up to your decision whether I can go ahead.
I will say yes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And the question that this constituent is asking is that if you are an 18, 19, or 20-year-old, and you're caught smoking... is that if you are an eighteen, nineteen, or twenty-year-old, and you're caught smoking, will you get a criminal record? Misdemeanors and petty misdemeanors stay on your record for life? I don't know the answer to that, if I may ask the author.
No, there's no criminal penalty, unfortunately, and I'm not proposing to do it. I, it is just to discourage it by making it harder for them to, to be able to get it. Or being able to purchase it. But there's no, there's no criminal penalty in the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Would you like me to speak?
So would you like to be the third, I mean, to be added on as a co-sponsor then?
You know, if I, if I do, before I go down that road, may I speak?
Sure.
This is a difficult subject for me to speak on. The very first bill that, and law that prohibited smoking in public places was a bill that was written, and a law that was, that was written by my father. And I think I've told this story in the past, but I'm going to tell it again. He had asked me about the bill before he introduced it. I would think it became public law 21, 130, I believe it was. And it was right before the election. And again, as a young man, I was saying, Dad, this might not be a good time to introduce this bill. Why don't we wait till after the election, and then you introduce it? Because at that time, as was mentioned by previous speakers, smoking was very recognized as maybe a glamorous thing, but it was also, it's a regular habit that many members of the community had. And I remember him looking at me with a very disappointing look, that look that a father gives a son. And he basically said to me, I was not voted into office to run for reelection. I was voted in office to pass good public policy. As a doctor, because of the health implications, this is good public policy. And whether I win the next election or I lose because of this bill, then so be it. And that was the very first bill when it came, concerning smoking in public places that went into effect, into law on this island. After that, more bills came. They were mentioned by the good author of this bill, the Natasha Act, the smoking within twenty feet, the disallowance of smoking within twenty feet of an entrance, the disallowance of smoking in restaurants and bars, and all these other prohibitions that have been placed around smoking because of the negative effects that smoking has. I have stated on the record before also that in my mind, there really isn't a redeeming quality about smoking, except for the very fact that it gives the smoker, the addicted smoker, his next fix. And that's why it's very difficult for me to speak to. Because there's, there is that other perspective, which another colleague of mine spoke to. And that was the issue of when are you legally able to become an adult and make a decision as an adult? If a young person at the age of eighteen makes a decision that is contrary to law, say for example, he breaks into the house because he's interested in something in the house to take, and he gets caught, he is tried as an adult. He is tried as an adult, and he is sentenced as an adult. But that was a decision that he made. It may have been the wrong decision, but he suffers the adult consequences. It was also mentioned that at eighteen, you're allowed to do certain things, or you're, you're a legal adult, so you're allowed to enlist. You're allowed to get married. You're allowed to sign contracts. And now, much like was said, and I, by the way, was the only one who voted against it, right, at seventeen, you are now allowed to vote in a primary election. I voted against that bill. And I guess the, the point I'm trying to make, that I'm really having a hard time with, is what was mentioned previously. What are we doing? The issue on this bill, I believe, is, well, the issue, the obvious issue is raising the age of being able to purchase a pack of cigarettes from eighteen to twenty-one in spite of the fact that eighteen-year-olds are recognized adults who will suffer the consequences as an adult if they make a dumb decision. In the case of smoking, if they were educated about the hardships and that, the health consequences of smoking prior to the age of eighteen, and then at the age of eighteen decide that regardless of the information they have received and the education on this specific subject they have received, they do make the decision that they were going to go buy a pack of cigarettes anyway, that is, again, a decision that they have made. May have been the wrong decision, and they will have to suffer the consequences, whatever they may be. Whether it's an addiction that they carry for the rest of their life, whether it's an addiction that they're going to have to fight to try to get out of, whether it's poor health, or whatever. But it's a decision they're, they're allowed to make, much like anything else perhaps, at the age of eighteen as an adult. I think the question that one of our colleagues really is speaking to, and he actually said it, when is an adult, an adult? When are we going to treat an adult as an adult? At what age? Is there a range? If it is, then perhaps that should be the real topic of conversation. I think even, I remember seeing in, in one of the newspaper editorials once too, that issue came up. So this is not, I mean, and I, and I fully understand the negative health consequences of smoking. I personally do. But in the bigger picture, it's a matter of a decision. And when are you allowed to legally make a decision on your own behalf? Is it when you become an adult? When you can actually sign a contract? When you can marry? When you can do all these things an adult can do? And even suffer the consequences of wrong decision at the age of eighteen and still, and, and be treated like an adult within the court system, and be sent, sentenced like an adult? And yet, we're not allowing them to make those kind of decisions in this instance, and even drinking. And so I have a problem. I do. I'm really torn of how I'm going to vote on this. Because I fully understand the arguments of why this bill is necessary in terms of the potential health consequences that could affect young people over the term of their life if they get addicted to smoking at a young age. On the other hand, I also recognize that we are holding the same, very same age group to the same standards for all adult decisions they make and the consequences that follow. And I have a problem. Which side do I vote on? What is the good public policy? I'm not sure. And I understand and I appreciate all the arguments that have been put forth very eloquently, very well, and I will go home and think about everything that was said today on this floor. And I was hoping that more people would be here to actually have their input into this. But I believe that those are the two divides on this floor. The health consequences versus the legal age of when you are allowed to make an adult decision for yourself. When? I believe that's the two sides on this issue. There may be more. I haven't heard from everybody, and I'm not sure anybody else is going to speak after me. But in my mind, that's the hardship I have. And I think it's a hardship that a lot of people are probably going to have to figure out within the next twenty-four or forty-eight hours in this, in this session hall about what, what is their answer to solve this issue? Because the good work that the Coalition for, for anti-smoking, they're doing a great job. They go out there, they do the research, they're bringing their, their researchers to speak to a, a broad base in the community. They really are very concerned about the long-term health, the social cost implications, the financial implications to the government, and things like that. And so I congratulate them, and I thank them for all the work they do. But in my mind, perhaps as a legal thinker, it's like, when is the age of adulthood that you're allowed to make a decision on your behalf, whether good or bad? And so I'm not really sure how I'm going to vote. And I appreciate the offer to add my name to this bill. But because I have not yet decided on where I stand on this issue, I would think that it would probably be best to thank the good author for extending that invitation to put my name on this bill. I would love to see my name on this bill, but I can't say that I am firm yet on that I will vote for it. Because of the issue. When are you allowed to make a decision as an adult? When you're eighteen or when you're twenty-one? Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. So on the motion then to include Senators Tom Etta and Senator Torres, no objections, so order. On the motion to send Bill Number 141 to a third reading file, no objections, so order. We will recess until tomorrow morning at nine.